Good evening, everyone. This time, we're going to start the regular commission meeting for Monday, April 15, 2024. If I can please have the city clerk call the roll.
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
Present.
Commissioner Caldwell.
Here.
Commissioner Harriet.
Here.
Commissioner McCool.
Here.
Commissioner Schimkus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Here.
Mayor Villa.
Here. At this time, I'm going to invite Pastor Jamie from Trinity Church to come up and do the invocation, and then I'll be doing the pledge of allegiance.
Make sure, Pastor, that the mic is on, the little green light.
See, check, check, one, two, three, check, am I on? Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, thank you, commissioners, appreciate the opportunity, let's bow our heads and pray. Father, we come before you tonight in the name of Jesus, and I, I thank you, Lord, tonight, for these men and women that are civil servants, that work so hard for our city, our community, Lord, I bless them tonight. Lord, I pray over their personal needs and the situations that they may be facing that we don't know about. Lord, I pray over their home, their health, their finances, their families, I pray that you would bless them and that you would strengthen them. Lord, tonight, I ask you to give them wisdom. I know that in the dynamics of a city at the size of ours, there are weighty matters that need to be considered, I pray that you would give them great wisdom. The word teaches us, Lord, that whenever we are lacking wisdom, we can ask of you, and you are faithful to give liberally, so, Lord, we ask that of you tonight. Lord, I pray for our city, and I know that we're growing, great things are happening. I pray, God, that we would truly be a reflection of the divine character and the nature of God, we thank you and praise you for that. Tonight, Lord, lastly, I pray right now for the wars and the issues that are going around in our world right now, I pray right now for the Middle East, I pray for peace. The word teaches us in the 122nd Psalm to pray for the peace of Jerusalem, and we pray right now peace over that Middle East conflict, and ask you, God, to give wisdom and to intervene in that situation. We thank you tonight, and we give you the praise for the opportunity to live in the greatest country in the world, in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May be seated. This time, we're going to go ahead for the approval of minutes and agenda, approval of minutes of the regular commission meeting of April 1, 2024, and the special commission meeting of April 8, 2024, as presented.
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner McCool. Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, we're going to go ahead and do some presentations and awards, we're going to have two proclamations and then a report, so if the commission minds joining me on Testing, testing, there we go. So I'd like to invite Mr. and Mrs. Simmons to the front for this proclamation. This proclamation is being done in honor of Barack, City of Deltona Animal Cruelty Ordinance Number 12-2023. It says, "Whereas the City of Deltona recognizes the importance of the health, safety, and well-being of animals, and whereas all 50 states have statutes recognizing animal cruelty as a crime, and whereas Chapter 828 Deltona City Ordinance, Chapter 14-7, cruelty to animals, and 14-8 cruelty, tethering defines animal cruelty acknowledges it as a crime, and sets forth penalties for the intentional abuse of domestic and companion animals, and whereas the City of Deltona endorses appropriate penalties against those proven responsible for the intentional abuse of domestic and companion animals, and whereas awareness of the connection between animal abuse and human violence can help protect those who are vulnerable, and whereas the month of April is recognized nationally as the Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the City Commission of Deltona, Florida, do hereby proclaim April 2024 as Prevention of Cruelty to Animals Month, and urge the community to work together to recognize and report signs of animal abuse to protect all animals from abuse and neglect. Again, honoring Deltona's own Barack, City of Deltona Animal Cruelty Ordinance 12-2023." This time, Commissioner Harriet.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas throughout history, Americans have lifted up feverant prayers of God on behalf of our nation, from the first gatherings of our founding fathers, elected officials have prayed and entrusted those they serve and represented to join them in prayer, including the authors of our Declaration of Independence, wrote that they, the representatives of the United States of America and General Congress, assembled, appealing to the Supreme Judge of the world, and carried on to the present day in presidential proclamations such as last year's invitation to join him in asking for God's continued guidance, mercy, and protection, and whereas a national day of prayer has not only been a part of our heritage since it was declared by the First Congressional Congress in 1775, but it is a public law established in the United States Congress in 1952, approved by joint resolution and amended by Congress and President Reagan with Public Law 100-307 in 1988, affirming that it is essential for us as a nation to pray in directing the President of the United States to set aside and proclaim the first Thursday of May annually as a national day of prayer, and whereas in our state and across America, the observance of the National Day of Prayer will be held on Thursday, May 2, 2024, with the theme, "Pray feverently in righteousness and avail much," based on the verses in James 5:16. The effective, feverant prayer of a religious man avails much, and whereas every first Thursday of May on the National Day of Prayer, we not only express our faith and exercise our freedom in prayer, but unite our hearts and voices in personal prayer and public gatherings throughout our city and across our America with feverant praise, repentance, love, and humble intercession for our neighbor and nation, holding fast to the promises throughout the holy scriptures that the Lord hears and avails much as he answers the faithful prayers of his people. Whereas the 2024 theme is "Lift Up the World, Light Up the World," based on the verses in Samuel, Chapter 2, verses 29 through 31, "For you are my lamp, O Lord, and my God lightens my darkness; for by you I can run against a troop, and by my God I can leap over a wall. This God, his way is perfect. The word of the Lord proves true, he is a shield for all those who will take refuge in him. Now, therefore, we, the Commission of Deltona, Florida, do hereby proclaim May 2, 2024, as Day of Prayer throughout the City of Deltona, Florida, and I commend this observation, observance to all our citizens."
This time, we're going to go to section C, which is a report from Tetra Tech Engineering.
Mayor, point of order.
Okay.
I'm wondering if we can move this to new business and allow citizen comments, I believe there's people here that want to talk about this, too, if it's all right with the commission.
You need a second? A second. Okay, so, there's a point of, there's a motion to move the report from Tetra Tech to new business, and there's a second by Commissioner Harriet. Is there any objection? No, can we please, uh, vote?
The reason was to include public comment.
Please.
Commissioner Villa Vasquez.
Yes.
Commissioner Caldwell.
Yes.
Commissioner Harriet.
Yes.
Commissioner McCool.
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Schimkus.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Yes.
Mayor Villa.
Yes.
Seven to zero.
All right, we're going to go ahead and move to public forum. If I can please remind everyone that public forum is anything that is not on this agenda, for those that are here for the city manager section, you will get a chance to speak on that subject when we bring it up.
Lisa Burke. Lisa Burke from the Florida Children's Methodist Home.
Mr. Brown, can you please turn on your microphone, there's a little button there, and we'll reset, we'll reset your time. Just make sure it's green.
It is green. So my name is Christian Brown, 912 Tamalene Street, I'm here speaking on behalf of Catalyst Global Youth Initiatives. It is an organization that is dedicated to the betterment of our young people. I've had the privilege of being the job prep coordinator for the last three, almost four years now. What we've been doing over the last couple of summers with our high school students is training them with career development, giving them the professional skills needed to be able to obtain jobs when they do graduate from high school and to be successful with whatever career path that they do choose from. We're teaching them how to dress appropriately during interviews, mock interviews, we're teaching them social skills, professional skills, helping them learn how to write resumes, cover letters, things of that nature, all the basic tools that you'll need to be successful in the work world. I'm here today to request assistance from the council in the form of finances, as you know, to run programs such as these, it does take resources, monetary resources, and it's something that's crucial for our young people because right now in high schools, nothing like this currently exists, so many of our young people graduate from high school unprepared for the real world, they're unprepared for the work world, they don't know how to interview properly, they don't know how to dress properly for an interview, you know, they don't know the basic social skills of shaking someone's hand, being able to make direct eye contact, things of that nature. We've had great success within the last three years with our young people, many of them have graduated successfully, they've gone on in their different careers, some have gone on to four-year universities, others have gone on to the military, and others have found regular careers, and it's because of our work that we have spent with them during the summer, just basically teaching them the right things to do when you are looking for a job, the right things to do when you're considering what career path that you want to go down, and, you know, again, just want to stress that this is something that doesn't exist in our current high school system and the current educational system. So without this program, without the work that we've been doing for the last couple of years, you know, our young people will continue to, you know, go out into the workforce completely and totally unprepared. Many of them do go on to apply for various positions in the city and other entities throughout Volusia County, so we're asking for this assistance so that your future employees will be properly trained and prepared, so, thank you.
Felicia Benzo.
Okay, I have this for you. In February, my name is Felicia Benzo, I'm the CEO of Catalyst Global Youth Initiatives. We are a progressive youth development pro-organization, we start with them in eighth grade with single one-on-one mentoring, we have group mentoring programs just for males and for females that are in the school, we have a butt-kicking academy coming up in the summer that is at DeSteltona High, Deland High, and at Mainland High. All the children participating in these programs are graduating. We were very happy, I was very happy, when Career Source offered us an opportunity to receive funds through Yeti, which is a government, it's government money, to train these kids, 15 to 18, to have job experiences. They work, our kids work, for six weeks and get paid $1,500, it's a stipend, it is not job compensation, it is a stipend. They're at your hospitals, they've been working for the city, they've been throughout the Volusia County area as well. This year, because there are no funds available, I sat with Ms. Briggs and Mr. Greg Jones and made a proposal, Ms. Vasquez is the only one that has what I proposed, to serve 33 of the youth in Deltona specifically for this, 33, we can do that. It is going to take money because of what we do, just like Mr. Brown said, he is the coordinator for this, the children don't have it, they don't even know how to write, they don't even know how to sign their name, they don't know what a resume is, they don't know how to talk, they look at the floor when they're talking to you, they don't know shake your hand. These are social, emotional skills that you need to survive as a human being in this culture, and that's what you need as employees. I am asking, I am asking that you consider putting away some money, it's in this proposal, $68,500, to provide stipends for $1,500 for each one of them, for their instructors, the materials that we have, and everything else we can do ourselves, that is what we're asking for, that is what we're committed to, that is what finishes things for them so that they feel confident and capable to enter your society. Right now, Deltona has nothing for this age group, never mind the rest, but for this age group, and I'm asking you to look at them, think about them, and be considerate about their future.
Good evening. My name's Jeff Alaback, 482 West Holly Drive in Orange City, and normally, I'm the one sitting up on the dais listening to folks, so I appreciate you giving us the time, and my relationship to Catalyst, I'm chairman of the board, and part of coming in to explain, because you're sitting up there, I know going, wow, we got to pony up money, well, unfortunately, you do, because Tallahassee only finds the way to tell you what to do, but they don't fund your, fund us anymore. Three years Career Source of Florida was, as Ms. Felicia said, funded the job prep, and now they took the money away for some, I, you know, as you all well know, it's hard to figure out what they do in Tallahassee, so we're in front of you today to hopefully the local government, the City of Deltona, can find a way to help pick up some of the slack, hopefully all, but if not all, maybe some, and we'll keep beating the bushes with other donors. For our summer academy, we have this program online called Give Butter, and it's an online program, we're raising funds all over, we sent out already five grant requests for our programs from individual mentoring, middle school mentoring, the summer reading academy, and this job prep program. If you'll see those programs, they progress from elementary, middle, high school, and it's a developmental thing for all our kids because they got to get better, because what do we have, all the older folks complain, they're not being taught what we were taught. Well, we're filling that gap, we're trying to help that situation, because it just doesn't come naturally, and we want to expose the kids to more opportunities, because no matter who you are, you're always just exposed to what your parents do for a living. Sometimes that's real good when they're doctors and lawyers and such, but when all the regular standard, maybe manual labor that's going away, we need to find, show them more opportunities and build and be able to run plants at the Amazon than those technologies and those things to make people move into the 21st century like we want, so really appreciate your time and hope you can give us your consideration. We didn't want to circumvent staff, in fact, we presented staff with the information in February, and I know there's a lot going on in the city and different changes, and as you're developing, as you mentioned, you have a city, excuse me, a city manager search and all that, so, but summer comes quickly, so we needed to get in front of you, so don't take offense that we're jumping the gun, we just wanted to get it in the public that we're working hard for your kids, and I appreciate your time and effort as city council members, and thank you for listening.
Good evening, everybody. I'm here this evening for one reason, is to address emails. I sent an email about the city manager meeting, and the mayor sent me a response, kind of a stock response, Troy, Mr. Schimkus is the only one that actually answered my email, not that I really liked what he answered, but he was polite enough to answer me and took the time, and I really appreciate that. It's really disappointing that nobody else bothered to do it, not even my district commissioner, Marissa, very disappointing. You all say all the time, oh, just email us, just contact us, we'll get back with you, and then at the beginning of March, I sent an email to the mayor and Jody Lee, again, no response, the mayor finally did answer me a month later, and Jody Lee never did, and it was a question about Twin Lakes and the Interstate Agency Agreement and the Hold Harmless Agreement, you know, you guys act like you don't care about resolving anything with Twin Lakes, and I know we're just one small development, but they're, they're actually talking about leaving the City of Deltona, and I would not like to see that happen, I want to see what these things are, you know, Albert brings it up, how come he's the only one that's mentioned it, how come nobody in the city has come to us and say, well, these are your options, you know, a hold harmless agreement, an inter-agency agreement, nothing, and I'm digging and digging, trying to find out the information on it, coming to you guys that are supposed to know about it, and the mayor did tell me, you know, he's not an expert on that, and he referred me to other people, and I sent an email back after he answered me, we got absolutely no response, so do you want us to D N X, is that what it is, you want to be done with us, or did you want to like work with us? Isn't that what you're... Isn't that what you're there for? Aren't you our commissioners? Aren't you our leaders? Aren't you there to help us solve problems? And, and I get it, we're a private community, nothing with the roads, whatever, but you know, the stormwater, as you guys know, is not all our fault. It's from all the overbuilding. And there's gotta be some way we can come together, 70, 30, 60, 40, something. There has to be some option besides us leaving the city, unless that is what you want. Anyway, I'll see you again later when the commissioner's stuff comes up, the city manager comes up. Thank you.
Jesse Simmons, please.
Good evening, Jesse Simmons. First thing I want to say is, I want to say what a blast I had yesterday at the mayor's fitness challenge obstacle course. The event was amazing. I don't know who all was involved from the city. I know Danny Ron and all his people are out there. I know it took, you guys did it within two months, and I'm still sore today. So, if you guys did that in two months, I can't wait to see what you do next year with some more time for more planning. It'll be an amazing event, so I'm looking forward to it. And I'd also like to acknowledge that this, the second week of April is National Animal Control Officers Awareness Week. And Danny, unfortunately, maybe for him, spends a lot of time on the phone with me, and so do other officers, and they really have a hard job. And they're really, I had to interact with one of them recently over a deceased dog, and it was extremely, except for the deceased dog part, was an extremely pleasurable conversation. She was very professional, very polite. She handled herself well. She had a trainee with her. He was new, and he still was a very interactive and very up on what's going on in the city. So, I think that they, they deserve some appreciation for what they do. I know they have other parts of their job, but for animal, animal control, it's, it's hard. It's a hard job to go out and, and stop things from happening and to stop these dogs from being loose. Thanks again for the recognition of Prevention of Animal Cruelty Month. And the prevention of animal cruelty should be everybody's responsibility. It's, it's just something that we should do. If you see something, you need to say something. And I know that people are afraid of repercussions from neighbors if they report their dog or if they call animal control. I, I understand the fear of a repercussion on, on that, and, but you have to, you have to do something, whether it's posted on Facebook, whether it's, I mean, contact animal control, contact your, your commissioner. Hell, contact me, you know, because I'm not, I'm not afraid of your neighbor. You know, if, if there's a dog or a cat that's being mistreated, I'm, I'm not going to back down until it's, until it's resolved in one way, shape, or form. We have a lot of things that Dan and I have been talking about, trying to, to better the city and, and make this city a catalyst in animal control, animal cruelty, and animal cases, so that the rest of the county will look at us and they won't have to go through, they'll look at us as an example of what you should do to help animals and not as just another city that, you know, isn't doing things for animals. I'm just going to end with a quote that I shared with a friend, and it has to do with a lot of stuff that's going on, on, on social media between the dais, between people in the community. There's two ways to build a building, the biggest building in a city. You can just build the biggest building, or you can spend all that time knocking everybody else's buildings down until you have the biggest building. And a lot of people will get the micro win of knocking other people down, and that works in the short term, but it's not sustainable for legacy. Thank you.
Marcy Anna Mead?
Mayor, can I have a point of, point of order, please, or point of information, actually?
Please.
Just, I think we should all be aware that Deltona TV does not appear to be broadcasting, and I just wanted to ask if that's being worked on, or if we have a mechanism by which we will know when it will be broadcasting. I know there's a couple items that our people are hotly aware of tonight and would like to watch, so I just wanted to ask if that's going to be... Okay. There were a couple emails that came into the city just a second ago that said it was not broadcasting, so I just wanted to make sure we were okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we're broadcasting on the website, on our phone, our smartphone apps, and our smart TV apps. IT has asked us not to stream on YouTube and Facebook because it's been interfering with their nightly backups. So, we're in the process, they're in the process of getting more bandwidth for us, but as soon as they get that, we'll be back up and streaming on Facebook and YouTube.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess, people in the audience, if you have had friends ask you why it's not streaming, would you please let them know their option is to go to the website and it will be streaming there?
Thank you, Commissioner Shimkus. Thank you, Gary. Randy White, please.
Randy White, Deltona. Not all heroes wear capes. There's a double meaning to that today, I've heard. But I wanted to also start with the, the mayor's fitness challenge, which has seriously kicked some butt the last two months. And I also wanted to let you know that I heard a lot of positive feedback about the, the 5K and all the staff that was there, and it was a real positive experience for the community. Also, what I heard a lot of feedback on was the meet and greet, and how overall, it was a very positive experience for the community to come out. I wish we'd have seen more people come out. With that said, the only other thing I want to address today is policy number CW07-01. And for those who are probably confused on what that is, it's your city's fraud policy. There's a section in there that specifically states that the city recognizes a zero tolerance policy regarding fraud and corruption, and that all matters, like, that I'm quoting this for you, all matters raised by any source will be taken seriously and properly investigated. Now, I'm sure this sounds familiar, because I came up here four or five times citing this since probably 2016. None of which were taken seriously or properly investigated until I went above you to the FDLE and then to the Department of State, which then came and investigated, finding our previous city manager fraudulent. So, I'm going to ask again for whoever, you guys go ahead and familiarize yourself with the policy later, and then contact me, and let me know who's going to head this and who I should be able to speak to regarding my concerns. Thank you.
German Tavarez?
Good evening. So, I was here the other day, and I saw that you guys are looking for a city manager. And we're bringing candidates from outside, and, you know, from Detroit and Michigan, some of the toughest cities. And I just feel like I want to run for city manager. I, I live right here in the city of Daytona, and I'm embedded to our citizens. I pay tax. My kids live here. I'm embedded to our neighbors. And, and I myself graduated from the University of Central Florida. I'm in my executive in educational leadership and executive leadership, have my master's in education. I understand exactly how they want to help the kids. And, and I could see the economic development coming to Deltona, developing our medical city, a metropolitan city, and still have the Oscars of our city, being able to bring more economic development. I worked for the Department of Economic Opportunity in Osceola. Also was fortunate to attend the City of Kissimmee School Government, in which I learned how to do the city manager job, and was able to expand our week with every department, from the fire department to the police department, the electricity department. And, and I agree with the vice mayor, you know, we have to work together to make sure that we can lower taxes in our city. Energy prices are too expensive. We have to make sure that we can fix our floods and, and our water, more quality water. We have to light up our streets. So, I live in this city, and I want to make this city beautiful. I want to make sure that if I do get an opportunity, unite us, not divide us, like the candidate we're talking about, coming in here and shaking people up and being a micromanager. I want to be able to come and unite our employees, see why they, where they need support, how I could support them so that they can do their job better, so that they can support their family, maybe grow with our city. I also have experience recruiting. As I work for the Department of Economic Opportunity, we rent some of the biggest projects in central Florida, the iPhone project. I helped recruit some of the top engineers for that project, for NASA. So, I do a lot of great things. Right now, I'm working at Seminole High School as a support facilitator with special key, with special kids, exceptional kids, about to graduate again, like I tell you, and I have a lot of experience in targeted school violence. I do research. So, we're not only going to go with what people say in the city, we're going to go with the statistics, the number, the data. I want to be here to support you guys, make sure that we all work together and, and that our streets, the holes in the streets get, get fixed. What I will do in the first 30 days, I will come in and make sure that all the money is in order, that it's accounted for. And I would like to go out with all the different departments, get to meet their heads, how I could support them better. So, that's, that's all that I have to say. If you guys have any question, or feel free to ask me questions, and I would like to be considered. Again, like I tell you, I live in this city, I'm embedded in this city, and I will be here after the fire is gone. People are going to come to our city, they're going to use our city as a stepping ground, and then move on. Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Kathy Bryan, please.
I wasn't going to talk tonight, but this Kathy Bryan, Deltona. What happened to saving stuff that had to do with other items on the agenda for, when that item on the agenda comes up? Because it seems like that should have waited until we talked about that subject. Just my humble opinion, but...
That closes public comments.
Thank you. All right. This time, we're going to go ahead and move to Section 8, Old Business. Section A, Discussion and Selection of City Manager and Negotiating Team to Negotiate... The motion was to put Tetra Tech after, in New Business. And Negotiate Team to Negotiate the City Manager's Contract. Mr. Glenn Whitcomb.
Mayor and Commissioner, I'm going to ask Colin to come up, our consultant for the city manager's search firm, to facilitate this portion.
Colin Benziger, Colin Benziger and Associates, over in Daytona Beach Shores. We interviewed two candidates over the weekend. It wasn't as many as we would have liked. We have a gentleman here in the audience who's indicated he'd like to apply. I think it's a little late, frankly, unfortunately. It was open, I think it closed three weeks ago, so, four. Question really is, how do you want to proceed? My suggestion would be for you to each, I assume you've got a ballot, and just check off the name of the person, or alternatively, interview more candidates, pass it to the city clerk, and we'll see where the commission stands, whether we have agreement on hiring someone, or whether we want to talk to more people. I will tell you that I've talked to both of the candidates that interviewed. They are both actively searching for other employment. It's kind of what you'd expect in Ms. Davis's case, because she is unemployed, I'd be disappointed if she wasn't. And Mr. Dougherty applies when he sees something that's in the South, that's, he wants to get closer to home, closer where some of his kids, kids are. So, with that, I'll just let you, let me know what you want to do.
You have Vice Mayor Jody Lee? And then Commissioner Vila Vasquez?
My only thing about this is, we had two, we had five, three people dropped, they withdrew. We had several other people on a list. When one's dropped off in the beginning, we took the sixth person on the list. And now, we understand Mr., I won't say Snuggles, but Mr. Suggs. Mr. Suggs is out of the hospital. I would see, well, my opinion is, I'd say bring in the other three, let's do it again for like a Thursday and Friday, and put it on special meeting on Monday. And if we can't come up with something out of the, out of the five people that already, already been vetted, if we can't come up with something then, then start all over.
If I might interrupt just for a second, I did get a text from Terry Suggs just on the way over, and he is not in a position where he could interview this week. He's still at home, and he's still recovering from his pancreatitis.
Thank you. Commissioner Vila Vasquez, then Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Shimkus.
Thank you, mayor. So, we put this responsibility to come up with this list on our residents, and I have to say, they did a great job. I also have to say that the two candidates that we interviewed were not selected by us here at the dais. They were selected by that committee. They trusted these two candidates, and these candidates were the most qualified. I hate to think that because we are going to push this election back to a couple of more days, just to bring up candidates that were not selected by the committee, that we might lose one of these candidates that do qualify for the position, for the position. I interviewed both of them. I've heard from some residents, I've heard from a lot of residents, I've heard from some of the committee members, who unfortunately cannot speak here today, so I'm guessing they're expecting me to speak on their behalf. I heard you very loud and clear, and I know who you're requesting, and I want to make a motion to select Doc as the new city manager, and to have HR and our attorney negotiate a contract for the new city manager.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and a second by Commissioner Shimkus. Is that all you have to say, Commissioner?
Yes, mayor, thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to Commissioner McCool, and then we'll hear from the audience before we take any votes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I also wanted to speak on this matter, because I spent the better part of last week and this weekend speaking to residents of District 4, which is my district. I reached out to them directly, because that's a very heavy weight on me. And first of all, I asked, without bias, tell me what you think of the city manager selection process. And when polling at random people in my district, they said, that's kind of your job. And I took that to heart, and I, then I talked to some of my residents pointedly about the selection process. We talked about the selection process as it applied to the committee that was decided upon. I talked about the gravity of the process, not to dilute it, because I understand we still, as a community, had a bad taste in our mouth regarding the charter review committee. And I wanted to make sure this process was not adulterated in any way, that we refer back to the committee, and that we refer back to the people that we serve. I also talked to business leaders in my community, in District 4, business owners regarding this, as it affected them. I also spoke with community leaders, people that have proven experience in our community, being community leaders. And they can out themselves as talking to me if they want to, but they are very well-respected in the community, and I asked about the process and about who we have. Some of the people that I talked to in terms of relationship of my residence and my business, people reminded me that we are also trying to run a business here at the city, that if they had qualified candidates, and if they had had the term that we had to select or get qualified candidates, that their fear would be we would lose a qualified candidate, because we have other municipalities directly in our area that want to do this. With that being said, I walked into the interviews this weekend with an open mind, listening to the constituency, trying to stay clear of what their process was, and being with those people that were selected. And it is unfortunate that, that we didn't have the packed, or the amount, the weighted amount of candidates. But as Commissioner Vila Vasquez says, that we put that on our selection committee, they brought forth these top candidates, and this is who we chose, like, anyway, right? The, the personal interviews... The personal interviews for me were, they were very telling, and I feel, I feel confident with my vote in the fact that this person was well-prepared. They went above and beyond with their preparation material, they knew our city, they understood what my ask was for the goals for 30, 60, 90 days. They understood what my concerns were with conflict resolution, as it applies to the commission interfering with the job that they do. They understood what I was talking about and talking about. We need to involve our residents, because the selection committee was the very spirit of what we're trying to do. So in determining my selection, all that is, that is what I did, and I am of the same mindset, Commissioner, as you and the other commissioner as well.
All I'm going to add is, I did a lot of reflecting in regards to this process. Obviously, we all up here picked a lot of your residents, or two specifically, from each district and then at large. And I, I probably got more emails about this than I've gotten about other things, which is kind of tough, because you think that, you know, residents don't get involved, they do get involved. And I heard from a lot of the people from the selection committee. So one of the things that kept coming up was, Mayor, we sent you our top five. So that is who we sent. We're never going to find the perfect candidate. I'm 100% aware of that. I mean, the unicorn, we can all dream it, I wish we can find it. I believe in this process. You know, I believe that the resident committee did the very best they could possibly do. I believe that they came together as a team. And let me tell you, the emails that I received today, they're very unified, not only from everyday residents, some that I usually don't see here at the chambers, but also from the same committee. And even some of the people that previously said that they didn't like anyone, did send emails saying that they had a change of heart. So I just want to bring that up, and I took everybody's emails into consideration. I thought about it, in my personal perspective, I prayed about it, I meditated, and I'm very comfortable with the decision I'm going to make as well. Commissioner Shinkus?
Thank you. I just wanted to ask Commissioner Maritzah, would you be, would you be willing to amend your motion to include one of the members of the dais here on the negotiating team?
I'm sorry?
Would you be willing to amend your motion to include one of the commissioners on that negotiating team?
No.
Okay, can we hear from the public, please?
Jim Pesca, please.
Jim Pesca Deltona. I want to start out with the process. I have to agree. We asked Citizen Committee to weed through the application. They did a fantastic job, and they presented us with a list of the best quality candidates that applied. Then, a vetting process started. Some through their own efforts, some through outside concerns, even one fickle finger of fate popped up, and we were left with two quality candidates left. To go back and choose, and ask to have the lesser candidates come back up and be reviewed, considered? I don't think quantity is going to give us the results we want. Quality will. Whether it be two or 20, at the end of the day, the real number is the one we need and choose. Next point, I attended the meet and greet, and I got the opportunity to talk with both of them. Great candidates. I spent more time with Ms. Davis than I did the other. Part of the reason was, she was very vague in her answers. I also knew that she was looking for a paycheck. Her tender down at her previous job was for two years. I talked with Mr. Robert Doc. He was a little bit more to the point, wrote a bit more definitive. He handed me an outline of what he believes, his moral code, honesty, integrity, integrity, something we've talked about continuously here, from the podium, from the dais. He put it in writing. He gave us a game plan, day one, 30 days, 60 days, what he will do when and how. He came in with plans on how to hit the ground running, ready to move. I also know that he's been looking for a chance to move south. His tender, six years and counting, at his current job. He has applied at least four to five different jobs that I know of. And each time, his hometown welcomed him back to continue doing the job he had. That somebody, that has to mean something, that his hometown doesn't kick him out. Yet he wants to come here and take on our challenges, not because he has to, but because he wants to. My vote, if I had a say in it, would be for Doc. Thank you.
Albert Bryan, please.
Albert Bryan Deltona. If y'all have been on Facebook, everybody knows that I was opposed to rushing this through. Matter of fact, I stood here this past week and told y'all that I was opposed to rushing this through. But with the enlightenment of the fact that Snuggs, Suggs, Snuggles, whatever you all are calling him at this point in time, is not going to be available this week, I will say that you go ahead with what you've got. Because at this point in time, this commission can't make an educated guess even of what you could get or couldn't get in the future. Now, that being said, if your vote is for Doherty, remember a few things here. One, he stood right here and told you, the reason why he wants to do this is so he can be next to his family in Melbourne. He's using this as a stepping stone to come here to be to his family. So if he wants moving expenses, I'll put it this way, the first year, you get 20%. If you're here the next year, you get another 20%. If you're here the year after that, you get another 20%. You should not start him any higher than $175,000. His experience just doesn't show any better high grade than that. Period, full stop. He gets insurance, just like any other employee here. Nothing special, like we gave to Chisel. I am so tired of seeing this, oh, we give you the whole moon, then they leave on us and take everything with them. I'm tired of that. The other thing to think about here, if we're going to do this, I would like to see evals guaranteed in his contract. I would also like to see the fact that if we're going to do this, we're going to take and have him show every year, a way and path to create a better Deltona. Every year. Whether it's budget time and/or otherwise, I don't care. You choose the time when he does it. When it's the time if he, when he's up for his race, so be it, whatever, I don't care. The other thing that I think that we need to think about is no phone allowance, no car allowance, at all, no severance pay for the first year. He's unproven to us. Period, full stop. He's unproven all the way around as a big city manager. No severance. He has to earn it. Maybe put it in there, what's called, you can take and say, after the first year, we'll talk about a severance, 10% of your pay, or 20%, whatever going rate is at that time. But no severance for the first year. Otherwise, he is literally using this city as a stepping stone to get closer to his family, and have us pay for him to move here. If that's truly what you want, then you don't care what his contract's all about, and we'll see you in November.
Courtney Burgos, please.
Hello again. I actually agree with Jody Lee. I think that we should bring up the rest of the eight. They were all picked by the committee, they just weren't ranked as high as the ones originally. Some did rank them higher, but as overall totals, they weren't. I don't understand why we're settling, worrying about, he's not going to be here. I used to do hiring in my position, I never interviewed somebody and hired them because I was afraid they were going to get away. If they don't think enough of us to make it another week or so, then they don't think enough of us to stay with us, basically. We're a good city. This is a good job. Why do we act like we're the redheaded stepchild, the ugly duckling, that nobody wants to come here? Nobody wants to do this work? It's a good job. Is it challenging? Yeah. Is it any more challenging than any other city of our size? No. So I don't understand why we're so afraid that somebody's going to get away. Why aren't they afraid that we're going to get away? We're a good town, a good city, it's a good job for Florida, that's a lot of money and a lot of benefits. How many people do you know out here that make that much? I don't. I worked at the same job for over 20 years, and didn't make that much. I was here 10 years before I made what I made up north. So this, we're offering them a great job, and it should be exciting, should be challenging. It's not rocket science. You get good people in there on the, in the departments, so that you have somebody to, you know, to support you, you take it step by step, and listen to the people, listen to the people with experience, you guys. I don't understand why we're running behind him. I really, I really don't. I mean, and I have nothing against him, or, I didn't come to the meet and greet because I have absolutely no idea what I would have asked them. What do I know about a city manager position? I don't. But I know that we need somebody running the show, that wants to stay here, that thinks Deltona's worth the time and effort, not somebody that wants to move closer, or wants a paycheck, or whatever else. Why couldn't we see Mr. Suggs, why couldn't you do a video interview on Zoom or something? People do it all the time. Big companies do it all the time. Why does he have to be nose to nose with you? And I don't know him either. So I'm not saying he's any better than any of the rest. I, like I said, think with Jody Lee, I think we should bring up the other three that weren't, or other two that's left, I guess, and give us something to really choose from, not just settle with somebody because we're afraid they're going to get away. And if you are going to go with that, I agree with Albert 100%. You need to renegotiate this contract the right way, not the way we've done it in the past, where we're stuck holding the stick. Anyway, I hope you have a good rest of your evening.
Randy White, please.
Randy White Deltona. So as a resident, but even more so as an active member of the community, I actually didn't do what I normally do. And I don't know how many people picked up on that on some of the comments recently. But despite that, I did stay out of the city manager search. When they released the names of those that were selected, I didn't do my normal checks. I have yet to even read any of their resumes. I've done zero research besides what some of you probably think. But I did attend the meet and greet, because I think a face-to-face will tell me anything more than research will probably tell me. That's for my own personal self. I asked 10 questions, both of them to the same candidates. I didn't change any of the questions up. We did get off track on some of the questions that we had, and went into further detail. And there was positive qualities that I liked about both candidates. But there was also some negatives that I felt that neither one probably would be best fit for this city. I could go into detail, but it's pointless, because the consensus has already been made What we heard a lot about this was that this process was going to be done very openly and transparently, so that we could rebuild some trust with our community, and that we can have trust in the new person that's going to be sitting in this seat. Despite all the opinions that were going around, and all the questions that were being asked to me, I still didn't give my opinion. And that's, that's not like me. But unfortunately, there was an inconsistency in the supposed open, transparent, and honest process. And I don't feel we've been giving an answer yet. And I feel it's an important answer that needs to be given, so that the community can feel like it was still an open and transparent process, right? Because otherwise, what I'm hearing is, that was never really the plan anyhow. Because actually, when we found out there was only two committee, or two left, committee members were having concerns with that, that they were not told ahead of time, that people didn't get moved up, which was agreed upon, and so on and so forth. So can we get this back to being a more transparent process, so that we can feel more confident in your reasonings for your decisions? And I'm going to ask again, for any ex parte communications to be explained, who it was from, on what date, was it, which form of communication? Was it a third party, an email, a text message? You know, I'm just asking for you to have an open, transparent process. That's it. Thank you.
German Tavares?
So I just wanted to add on, like, if I heard right, he said $170,000 for the next city manager? Guess what? Is that right?
Mr. Travadas, you have to direct.
I'm sorry.
Self.
Yeah, so what's the salary for the next city manager? $170,000, is that correct? Did I hear wrong? But I can tell you this much, when I get the opportunity to become city manager, I'm going to do the job for less money, $106,000. So we could take the remaining of that money and do something else with it. Because I don't do this for the money.
Mr. Travadas, point of order, you've already come up here, we've already closed, three weeks ago, we closed that opportunity. So unless you have something else to add regarding this process, thank you.
That ends public comments.
Thank you. At this time, we're going to go ahead and go for a vote, please.
I would like to ask again, Maritzah, are you sure you're not okay with the commission selecting one member of the dais to?
No.
She said city staff. Commissioner Shinkus, and then we'll go to a vote.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say, I understand that concern about the contract, and just keep in mind, the contract is not being finalized by the people that were selected, which was HR and our attorney. The contract will always come back to the commission for approval, with our opportunity to make adjustments as needed. So as much as I would like to have a person on that board, I still feel comfortable that this commission will have the opportunity, as a whole body, to determine what should or should not be in that contract. Thank you.
Motion passes seven to zero. So city, city manager, I guess you reach out to, or Mr. Colin reaches out to Doc? Okay. All right, this time, we're going to go ahead and move to New Business. We're going to start off with the motion that Vice Mayor did with Tetra Tech, report from Tetra Tech Engineering, engineer of record for the Phase 4B Lake Monroe intake pump station and raw water transmission main project. As the consultant is coming up, I just want to get a point of clarification, Madam Attorney. Does that mean today officially that the Citizens Group sunsets?
No.
No?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted, because you keep asking me, and I don't have a response. Okay. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable...
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commission. Thank you for having me here tonight. I want to start by saying we've really wanted to try and have this opportunity to just come forward and give you all some facts instead of all of the conjecture that's been going around. I thought I'd be able to hand these out, but I guess you will have to check it out after the fact. What I've got here is a chronology of the service, of what has transpired. I've got attachments that show backup. I've got the receipts for every one of the statements that I'm about to go through here. And I've been with Tetra Tech 30 years. I've graduated at University of Florida, Civil Engineering. The original project manager for this job, for this project, left Tetra Tech. And when things started to go awry during construction, I was being involved with the city since 2002, was appointed to step into the progress meetings with the contractor to try and see what was going on and give whatever support we could give. So what I've got here is, starting August 16th is when we got our first, our contract for our engineering services. March 13th, the contract shows, starts out with geotechnical services included as part of our contract, our original contract.
Sarah, can you provide the dates, the year also?
Yes, that was August 16, 2019, is the original contract. Geotechnical services for the site were included. March 13th, 2020, and I've got the email backup in here, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection wanted some additional work to be done in Lake Monroe for the trench that was going to be dredged out to the intake system. So instead of us adding that additional money to our, for the geotechnical engineering to our contract, the email chain will show you that these managers requested that we pull services out, pull geotechnical services out of our contract, and they were going to contract directly with the geotechnical engineer.
Can you, I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Mayor, but I just need clarification. I'm sorry.
Let's let, let's let him finish his presentation and then, because I already have people on the board, so we're not interrupting. We still have to maintain order up here. So I'm going to ask all the commissioners to please light up the board, hold your questions, and let him finish, please.
Okay, I get that. But for, if you get too far in front of the story before you clarify a point, you know, you don't have that frame of reference. So I want to make sure, I'm sorry, I want to make sure that we understand who the city manager was. I don't want it just said city manager. So if you could clarify as you go along who the player was or who the actual person was, that's all I ask for, for clarification. And I won't interrupt, but I'm just saying we need that as we move along. So do the residents.
If you can just, don't be general in it, just be specific. There's a city manager, that's what you want specifics.
I wasn't sure how, you know, want to approach it.
I just don't want us to keep interrupting because the Vice Mayor is looking at me like I got questions.
Yeah, that was manager, Mr. Peters was, was the manager at that time. And like, as I said, that was March 13th, 2020, documented with backup showing the email chain of the request to remove those services from our contract. City contracted with the universal engineering, who was a geotechnical engineer. They got the report, they provided us the report. That geotechnical report became the basis of our engineering design. I've got a copy of the geotechnical report attached in the attachments. The report you go through clearly doesn't show any type of, and don't want to cast any distortions on the geotechnical engineer because this boy, the feature that was out there was a chimney. So even with the holes they poked around the site, they could have poked three times those holes and may not have still discovered this feature. So, but the fact of the matter is that they gave us a report. That report gave standard groundwater conditions out there at the site. That became our basis of design. The engineer of record, who still works with us, did all of the engineering and, and used conventional engineering methods to design the pump station and the intake system. So that was the design basis for this project. Moving along to the bidding, the bidding was done, let's see here, oh, the next service that was negotiated was for civil, was for the construction engineering and inspection services. Those are the services that are done after the design and permitting. We were originally scheduled to do those services as the engineer of record. Again, the manager, well, Mr. Peters, did not want us to move forward with those services. So he negotiated contract with another one of the engineers in the, in the consulting library, Mead and Hunt, got that contract for the engineering services. So they are responsible for watching the contractor, to make sure the contractor is following the construction documents, in substantial accordance with the construction documents. That's what the engineering, construction inspector is required to do. So they got to make sure that the contractor is following the contract documents that April 13th, 2022, again, you'll, you'll find the attachment. And I've got all of the attachment references in this chronology of, of services. The contract documents call for a de-watering permit to be obtained by the contractor before any hole, any holes are being poked in the ground around the site. You are required to get a signed and sealed de-watering permit from a professional de-watering specialist. That document was not obtained before the construction was started to dig for the pump station. Got the dates and the meeting minutes from the CEI, who was the other consultant, Mead and Hunt. I've got their meeting minutes showing when the contractor ran into the problem at the site. And I've also got documentation showing when the de-watering permit that was supposed to have been obtained before that work was being done, was obtained after the fact. So construction at the site was started without going through the proper steps to get the proper de-watering permit or de-watering plan put in place that would tell the contractor how many deep wells and they, they, they put in what they typically do at a typical site. This is not to say that the de-watering permit, you know, the de-watering specialist would have discovered what was going on out there themselves. But nonetheless, by not following the contract documents, that just puts the contractor in a precarious situation. You, you don't follow that step. It's hard to prove a negative. It's hard to say that if they had gone through and done what they were supposed to do, they would, things would have gone well. But they didn't get their de-watering permit. So they owned the conditions that they got out there and started digging and caused because they didn't follow the contract. Got the backup again in the documentation here. The certified de-watering plan shows that the contractor did not put in the conditions that were supposed to have been put in place. There were, there were supposed to be some, eight deep wells put in, which would go down deeper into the ground than the system that they put in place. So they puncture this boil, and the boil starts to produce more water than they can handle. In their despondency of trying to get it to stop, they shove the PVC pipe in the boil to pump out of the, the boil. And we were asked to get, let me step back. The geotech that did the original plan was, was asked to help with trying to find a solution. Hey, we got a problem out here, water is all over the place. Help us come up with a solution. Well, that geotech was not cooperative and wouldn't get out there to, in a timely fashion. So Mr. Peters asked us if we could get someone else to come out. So we got one of our subsidiaries, Artman and Associates, to come, to go out to the site and do an assessment of the conditions. Artman is reputable for being called upon for all of the major sinkholes you see in central Florida. They were the engineers for the famous Winter Park Sinkhole. So we called upon Artman to have one of their specialists come out. And he noticed that PVC pipe that the contractor put into the boil to pump out of, and he said that was not a good thing to do. Said that may have caused the soils underneath the ground to become compromised and caused the site that they were trying to excavate from to be structurally, the structural integrity of that site to be questioned. So that caused the contractor to say, whoa, 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 you know, if the site is going to be compromised, we don't want to put this big concrete vault in the ground and be responsible for it if it settles sometime in the future. They were not, at that time, Mr. Peters did not hold the contractor accountable to say, well, you got, at that point, in my opinion, there should have been some pushback to the contractor to make them responsible for the conditions they had caused without having their signed and sealed de-watering plan. That confrontation was not taking place. We were asked to accommodate them to try and find another solution. So the contractor say, well, they're, they're not going to proceed with the construction at that site. That is a time that the ultimate solution was, well, let's redesign it and put it in another location. Our margin orders was to give them a task authorization for a redesign, not knowing what the, the repercussions of what that was going to cause. So that's what we did. We gave him a change, gave Mr. Peters a change order, say, this is what it would cost to redesign the site to go at a, at another location because the contractor refuses to move forward with the site that has been compromised with the soil conditions being structurally modified. So we gave a task authorization, and that's when the wheels fell off the wagon and all of a sudden, we're being blamed for being, you know, putting out a faulty design and this, that, and the other. And, and that is the point at which we were basically pushed aside and said, no, we, we, we're, we're going to move forward with the work as, we're not going to allow you to get involved and, and defend yourselves and try to make a case for why this, these conditions have gotten like this here. Because I personally have reached out to, you know, a couple of commissioners, I'm trying to think of when, I reached out personally trying to go over Mr. Peters' head to get an audience with somebody else saying, hey, you guys are not getting the facts. I want, all I want to do is present the facts and let you all have the facts before you. Finally, and I really thank you for this opportunity, I've got the facts and the backup and everything you need right here. The de-watering plan was never really instituted the way it was supposed to be, even after the fact. They didn't finish with it. The site was basically abandoned and restoration was started. And the attempt was made to try and get money from St. John's to pay for the design, and I guess that may have fallen through. But all I've wanted to do this whole time is, is get the facts on, on the table and let you all at least know what, what happened out there and provide you with the receipts and the backup of what really happened. Because there's been a lot of, we've been blamed for, and it was frustrating to just allow that to move forward like that, but we were not allowed an audience to, every time we made an, I made an attempt to reach out to folks, you know, above the manager, it was delegated back to the manager, and we were basically told to just, just calm down and take, take what's coming. That's where we've been. You know, we've just allowed things to go forward the way they've been with us being blamed for doing something that we really weren't involved with.
Thank you for that. We're going to, I'm going to let the commissioners talk now. So Vice Mayor Jody Lee and Commissioner McCool.
Thank you for coming in and explaining all this. I'm going to, and I'm the one that has been pushing lately, just recently pushing to get you in here to explain.
Yes, sir.
Because I want to try something, do this, I want to try to do something different that I can't remember has ever been done in this city. I want to hold somebody responsible, make them pay for it so we don't have to have taxpayers pay for it. That's kind of a new option for us because we don't do stuff like that. So you have all this stuff, and this is just, and I'm not, I'm just going to ask a question. In your opinion, who is responsible for this mess up?
That's not a fair question to ask him.
Okay. How much, do you have, I'll, I'll retract the question, but at this particular point in time, do you know how much, do you know how much we paid your company to take care of this issue?
We were, we were not paid anything beyond the original design fee and the, we did shop drawing reviews.
You know what that was, the price, how much it was?
Oh, yeah, actually, I've got the $760,000 for the original design for the pipeline all the way from the site up to the Alexander Avenue Water Treatment Facility, the pump station site in the, in the parking lot, the intake system at the boat ramp, and the, this includes all of our sub consultants, too. We had a dredging consultant that was $150,000 of this here that was responsible for designing the trench that goes out into the St. John's to allow the water back to the, to flow back to the seawall at the, at the boat ramp.
Right. See, what I want to do is I want to get down to the heart of it. You know, I myself am saying, let's hold someone responsible. And I have mentioned your company several times because I was led to believe it was all your company's fault. But I want to get to the bottom of it so we can get consensus to get our insurance company to go after whoever's responsible so it doesn't fall on our citizens' back. And we get either fixed or we get our money back so we can get someone to fix it. Of course, nowadays, it'll probably cost us a lot more to fix it because prices of everything has went up. But we've been sitting here with this eyesore for several years now, and nobody seems to do nothing.
Right.
We, we've had, and I'm not trying to pick, I'm not trying to pick on anybody that works for the city. I'm not trying to pick anybody up on our dais. I'm not trying to point fingers at nobody. But we keep asking, this keeps coming up, this keeps coming up. And since I've been elected for a year and a half, coming to the meetings two years prior to that, and we ain't never moving on this project. But it's still sitting there, and we, we just keep complaining about it, complaining about it, complaining about it. I want something done. And if that means holding your company responsible, that's what I'm going to try to do. If it's holding these other companies responsible, that's what I want to get done. This is something we need to do. And if it's, one of them companies made a mistake, it's not up to the taxpayers, including myself that pays taxes, for me to pay for the mistakes.
I agree.
And that's what I want to push forward. So I'm not trying to jump on you or attack you, and if it comes across that, I'm sorry.
No, I, I agree with you.
But this was a grave misstep. I mean, I even understand the water, de-watering. If nobody understands, I mean, you're going to start drilling holes, especially around water. You're going to have a de-watering plan. That's a common sense kind of thing. There wasn't even a plan. And I understand about the, you know, you changed the, the ground, the dirt, the soil underneath. You have that much water pushing through, it changes it. There was actually a town in Jamaica that did that, half the town in Jamaica disappeared and floated off into the ocean. It sank because the, the ground underneath was compromised and it just turns to mush. If that's what was going on here, I mean, these are supposed to be the experts, whether it's from your team or one of these other companies. it's from your team or one of these other companies, these are the experts. It should be on them to fix the problem that they created. These are experts. If they screwed it up, they should be held responsible. End of story.
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Harriet.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, first of all, for coming. Thank you for bringing supporting documentation. I would ask that we get, do we have copies of all the supporting documentation?
I don't think you've got this here. You may have it in your records, but...
Madam Clerk, I love you so much. I love you, love you. But I think that we need to archive and collect that as of this evening. We need to make note of that because it is now public record, it's been made a part of the process, it's been presented as part of the process. I think that not only does that need to be available to staff, to commission, to city attorney, to anyone in staff, number one, it needs to be made for the public, it needs to be available for the public. I don't think that this should fall under PRR. I don't know, but here's what I'm saying, that this is part of this process this evening, it would be presented like a slide or a handout, so I don't know that it would go under, that it needs to be collected, and any one of these people need to pay for any of this, right, as part of, you know what I mean? It should not cost the...
Well, no, if it's like trying, then you should be charged. They want paper, they want paper, paper.
Sir, do you have these, I'm sure you have a compilation of these, this documentation. Has this been scanned into any kind of file or anything like that?
Yes, I've got PDFs of this here.
Okay. So I would ask that it be submitted electronically, if it can be archived. I'm trying to strike the balance between making sure that all of this is included, right, and that it matches up with electronically. I don't know by which process that would be, but I just want to say that this is being presented tonight, so the documentation needs to match what is submitted electronically. So however that's reconciled, Madam Attorney, Mr. City, whoever, Madam Clerk, I want to make sure that that happens, okay? That that matches what is submitted electronically, that you verify, sir, because you are presenting this to the public, right, for consumption?
Yes.
That you verify, since this is your work product, that you make sure that the integrity is followed when it is given to us and then what we present electronically to the public, if you can, Madam Clerk, whoever, needs to work on that party, okay? So that, number one. Number two, I want to find out, I understood these, I understood this process, sir, I understood where you took us with the date, and I just want this answer. Who, sir, was in charge for allowing the process to continue even though we knew we did not have a de-watering plan? Who allowed us to jump process without that? Who was the deciding, determining factor in deciding that it moved forward with any work without following process?
That responsibility falls on the CEI consultant who was in that role and that responsibility. They are the eyes and ears for the city to make sure that the contract documents are being followed. And before spade of dirt was excavated, they should have put a halt to the contractors, said, hey, where's your sign and seal the watering plan before you get out there to do it the way they thought they should do it? And because they run the risk of, the contractor, without that plan, they run the risk of putting themselves in jeopardy if things go awry, which they did. When you don't have your plan, you sort of own what you did, in my opinion, but that has to be hashed out.
All right, let me ask you this, sir. At any time, did anyone report any of these concerns?
I'm so sorry. Ladies, can you please, there has to be a better time for that because we're giving a residence disservice, there's people that are very interested in this. I understand people want copies of it, but it's very distracting. I apologize. Go ahead, Commissioner McCool.
Let me ask you this. At any point during this process, did anyone report to St. John's this, that there was a problem? Did they report at any time to St. John's that there was not a de-watering plan? Did anyone at any time reach out to St. John's that you knew about?
I'm not sure if they weren't aware, if they were aware of the de-watering plan, but they had a representative present at several of the progress meetings.
Sir, do you know, or would you feel comfortable, or do you remember who the representative was from St. John's?
I could send it to you. It's in the meeting minutes of the progress meetings.
I believe it is.
Yeah, yeah, there was a representative.
I know it isn't, but I am collecting information in order to follow through where I need to follow through as a commissioner. So I, I mean, I'm sifting through, what, 3,000 pages of stuff here? Okay. And let me ask you this. At any time, has anyone mentioned, or has anyone at Tetra Tech been asked or considered how much for restoration, sir? I understand the $760,000 initial buy-in, but how much for restoration, sir?
That was out of our purview. It was the other consultant, was the CEI consultant, is the one that has been put in charge of working with the city on that.
Okay. Thank you, sir. You've answered my questions.
Yes.
Commissioner Harriet, then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you very much for making yourself available to come and present that today.
Thank you.
In your experience with past projects in other agencies and municipalities, who, how is it normally done in terms of who gets the CEI contract, who does the design-build contract, who does the geotech contract? Are those usually all one company, that it's all included in one scope of work, or is it normally piecemealed out the way that it was done in this case?
I would, I would say 95% of the time, we do, we are responsible for the, Geotech is a sub to us, and we handle the construction services as part of our, as the engineer record, yes, yes.
So it's fair to say that that's, breaking that out was the leading cause for all of the confusion that it took me a full page of notes to document?
Yeah, it does increase the confusion, I guess you could say, in terms of, when, because we were, like I said, we were not the CEI, but when the problems were discovered, we were asked to get involved a little more to try and lend whatever help we could lend to the process, even though we weren't the CEI.
And I think I speak for the dais when I say that we greatly appreciate everything that your company's done to try to assist when necessary. Also, would anybody be able to say for certain if, what the effect of any of those missteps were on the total project? If the de-watering plan was done properly, could we say that we would have avoided any, spending any additional dollars?
That's the thing, it's, it's hard to say. They could have done the proper de-watering plan and, you know, poked the holes where the de-watering plan told them to poke the holes, but if they did not hit the, or test the area that, where this little chimney just happens to be, happened to be out there in that site, if they hadn't punctured it, no one would have ever known. So it's hard to say, you know, they may have gotten fortunate and penetrated it, but...
Do you have an idea of the size of the chimney? If you're, if you're looking up and looking down on it, you know, is the chimney, you know, yea big around, or 10 feet around, or?
Well, they shoved, they shoved an eight-inch PVC pipe in it, so it was...
It was small.
Started, yeah, it was relatively small, but it was under pressure. It had, when they, when Artman and Associates got involved, they put in a plasometer which measures the pressure, and the water was eight feet above ground surface, the pressure, which is a lot of pressure to be, to push the water up eight feet.
If you don't mind, Ms. Phyllis, do you know what the, the area of that site was roughly? Are we looking at like a site that's a half acre, acre, two acres?
I don't recall, but it's the upwind part of the...
Can you speak into the microphone, Ms. Wallace? I'm sorry.
I don't recall the actual square footage or the acreage size, but I would say, just in my observations in my mind, it's probably around a quarter of an acre.
So 10,000 square feet plus or minus, and we're looking for an eight-inch circle?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I don't know that this needs to be continued as a witch hunt. The information is phenomenal. I think that we've got enough to agree that Tetra Tech is not at fault individually on this. I think that if we try to pursue this as a witch hunt for any one contractor, it's gonna make it extremely challenging for this city to do business in this industry moving forward. We have a Teresa Basin study coming out, which we know is gonna have a lot of drainage projects in it, and if we start pursuing contractors for largely the fault of staff at the time, then nobody's gonna want to help us with all the projects we know are gonna come up with the Teresa Basin. So with that said, I'm done.
Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, ma'am. And I hear you, Commissioner Davidson, but I also want to point out to residents that, and hopefully have the listening to what you heard, that it has not been staff's fault for not moving forward to take care of the problem that we have in Lake Shore Drive. There were steps that they needed to take, and without permission from different contractors and St. John's Water, St. John's Water Management, they cannot move forward with that section that's still waiting to be taken care of in the lake. Staff did everything they could to try to do as much as they could. My question to you is, who was responsible to get the de-watering permit?
The de-watering permit, the de-watering permit is required for a certain threshold of water that is being, I think it's a million gallons per day. And the contractor, if you look at the specs or the package I gave you, I've got our spec in there, and our spec puts that responsibility on the contractor and the contractor's de-watering expert.
Okay, but you said that they never got the permit?
I don't think they ever, I don't think they got a permit for that.
Okay.
I don't think there was a permit obtained.
When they started noticing that they were having a problem, who was responsible to put a stop to the project?
At that time, it should have, the CEI should have put the contractor on notice that you are not following the contract documents, you can't proceed until you get a de-watering plan, signed and sealed in accordance with the contract documents. There should have been a stoppage of construction at that time. That, it's a game with the contractor. Then the contractor's gonna claim that they were delayed, and they're gonna try and get a change order for additional time on the contract. So it's, that would be a decision between the city and the CEI to say, hey, do we stop them, and if we're gonna stop them for cause? That would be something that would be worked out between the CEI specialist and the city.
So it's a group decision to be made?
Yeah, it's a group decision. Yeah, the CEI would not just unilaterally just make that decision. They're gonna consult with the city, say, hey, these guys have not gotten their, they're not following the contract documents. You know, we recommend that they not proceed, but it's your call as the owner of the contract to say, let's stop it or let it proceed.
So the decision to stop the project or continue is at the city level?
Yes. I would say that ultimately, to stop the contractor at that time, is the contractor and the owner is the one who has that. The contractor, with the contractor is the city.
Okay.
The CEI is not going to take that responsibility, it would be the city.
All right, thank you so much. Appreciate your answers. Thank you, ma'am.
Real quick, Mayor, I just want to clarify. When I, when I reference staff, I'm making a reference not to city workers, I'm making a reference to leadership, so.
Thank you, I appreciate the point of clarification. Before I go to Vice Mayor, I have a couple of questions. Sir, were you guys paid the full contract?
For design, yes, sir.
Did you guys finish?
Yes, we got the full design and permits, and all of that was completed.
Mr. Whitcomb, to your knowledge, do you know if we conducted a form, like a full investigation on this matter?
Can you repeat that, Mayor? I'm sorry.
Do you know if, from your recollection, did we ever conduct an investigation on what actually happened at that project?
Yes, we met several times with the contractor and the CEI and Tetra Tech through the process. I don't know that it was actually determined whose fault it was because of the unforeseen circumstances out there. You know, when they, the contractor started digging, Mr. Rod is correct, they did not do a proper de-watering plan. Then they started digging, they put in some smaller well points, if I remember correctly.
Standard well point, yeah.
And then they went back, and then they put the bigger well points in after that point, and it was determined that those weren't, wouldn't do any good with the amount of water that was coming out of that chimney or out of that boil.
Mr. Whitcomb, if you, if this was to happen today, and you're the city manager, would you be allowed that, to proceed without the proper permits?
Well, I don't know that it was a permitting thing, but no, I wouldn't allow for it to continue on, no.
Well, they're saying that the certain plans and permits were never obtained.
Well, a de-watering plan itself, I don't, I'm not sure about the de-watering permit. I believe that was pulled, but it may have been after the fact, as Mr. Cash alludes to.
Yeah.
As far as the plan itself, I never saw a real solid plan at that time, no.
You see, because I, this is the issue I have, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I agree with Commissioner Harriet, and I also agree with Commissioner, or sorry, with Vice Mayor Jody Lee, because I was one of the first ones that kept saying, you know, we need to start holding people accountable. Because we have residents, to Commissioner Vila Vasquez's point, she has residents, I'm sure, calling her on a daily basis, right? I know I've had a couple of emails from some of those residents, and it's not fair to them, right? And to make sure that this doesn't continue to happen or happen again, we need to figure out what happened. Regardless if we end up holding, in the past, somebody accountable, but knowing that once we find out what happened, where and who dropped the ball, how we can hold the next person accountable so it doesn't happen again. And that's, that's what I think, at the end of the day, it's not that it's a witch hunt. We want to make sure that we're a growing city, right? We're a metropolitan city. We, we continue saying that we want to make sure we do things right. Well, part of doing things right is making sure that when we're doing these projects, we're following through on them, and we're making sure that the proper procedures are being, are being taken into account. So I don't know, I mean, is it possible for me to get a copy, or for the whole dais, I guess, to get a copy of whatever investigation you guys did so we can see? Because I was, I was under the impression that, this whole time, that it was Tetra Tech's fault. So I'm guilty of that. Respectfully, I was one of the few people, as a matter of fact, I think it was a one to six vote, I wanted to make sure that you guys weren't able to do business in the city for at least six months.
Yeah, we've...
So I apologize if I jumped the gun, that's the information I had in front of me, but I'd love to see that report. And Madam Attorney, I don't know if it's a proper thing or not, but if there wasn't a proper investigation done, would it be proper for me to hold a request under Special Commissioner comments and request to actually do an actual investigation of what happened? Not to literally go after anyone, but to make sure it doesn't happen again?
Mr. Mayor, when Mr. Chisholm was interim or acting or whatever, there was an investigation. I was not included in it. I recently asked about it, and I got a two or three-page document, I think from Ms. Wallace, that kind of summarized what they determined, and I mean, that can absolutely be given to all of you. I repeatedly asked to be involved in this prior to Mr. Chisholm. I have, I've done over 300 projects or been involved as a lawyer in projects in my career, and I was always happy to get involved or to see, because one of the problems we have now is the time that has expired, and there are... And there are statute of limitations with regard to these different contracts. So one of the things I was talking to Liz about was, one of the first issues I think we need to look at is the dates of all of those agreements and contracts and determine what statute of limitations has run and which hasn't. And if it has run, there's not much we can do about it. That doesn't mean we still can't go to the baseline of what happened and why did it happen and try and put protocols in place. You know, just like on contracts, as an example, in the city, we have an alarm system, and Debbie James has put this alarm system into place over time. These alarms come up on every single key piece of a contract as it goes through the system in the city. And we never miss any key dates or times because we have that system. It can also be done with project management. There are a number of technology tools that, I'm a dinosaur on a lot of that, so I'm sure that I don't know what, you know, younger people who have been doing this know how some of those tools can be used. But we absolutely can put a system into place to prevent something like this from happening. So what I would say is, we'll start and copy you all on that three-page document. I was not included in it. And I was not included when some of these things started over there either. So all I'm saying is that we can, we absolutely can do better and find a way to make some things fall into place.
So if you can, please, and then if it's the DIAS's pleasure, once we all have been able to analyze it, then if we feel as a whole that it wasn't sufficient or something, it's not entirely there?
No.
Maybe at a later time we can.
Yes, and we can. Of course, again, one of the issues that I will try and tie down before you get to that point is, with these agreements, actually looking at timelines, because that's really key to a lot of this. Because this, I don't know, I saw one in there that it was from 2019, you know, that they couldn't even go farther back. So I mean, again, we have to look at the statute, statute of limitations, and tell you what is even possible with some of these things. But also, it also can be like a cornerstone of putting together a project management system with alarms and, you know, things that are noted and dealt with. So I mean, we have issues all the time. One of our alarms goes off, that department is contacted, you need, you need a new contract, you have to go for proposals, you have to do this or that. That equally applies to project management, just like it applies to grants. So I mean, there are processes that can be put in place.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and listen to the public first, and then I'll go to Vice Mayor Jody Lee, Commissioner McColl, and then Commissioner Harriet. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Cash. Just a second. Thank you.
Marcia, on to me.
Liz, I think your mic is off.
Marcia, 100 Sweet Gum Woods Court in Deltona. Oh, what a debacle. First of all, thank you very much for beginning the restoration process of this whole system. It has been beginning to occur. The residents have started to enjoy the area adjacent to the boat ramp again. Again, we've organized some sunset get-togethers down at the lake, and I want to thank Phyllis for her proposal, the last meeting, to go forward with that. Needless to say, I'm a resident of Edgewater Condominiums, which is the property immediately adjacent to the lake. There's approximately 600 residents in that community. The adjacent lakeside property is Lakeside Condominiums, and there's about 300 residents there. So you're talking, Deltona, approximately 1,000 residents that are being directly affected by this whole debacle mess. I'm sure you would agree that one of your biggest personal investments is your home. Most people also put an intrinsic value on their home. We at Edgewater are very fortunate to live in a green space within the city of Deltona. There are many trees, wooded areas, shrubs, and native plants on our property. The surrounding area, including the lakefront property, which is comprised of the boat ramp, the adjacent areas, and the properties across the street, which are an important part of the total environment of the Edgewater community. Residents' decisions to reside at Edgewater in many instances are based on the proximity to that area. In the fall of 2021, we awoke to the area adjacent to our entry road, that we own, the perimeter drive, as part of Edgewater Condominiums. Being bulldozed, all the greenery, mature trees that have been there for at least decades being bulldozed under. I live on the first court off of Edgewater, and I did not have a lake view. I woke up that morning with a lake view, not a desirable effect in this instance. The boat ramp was being dismantled and the adjacent areas were closed. No trespassing tape was quadrupling off the entire area, including the sidewalk, which multiple people walked there to get access to Green Springs. It was an absolute mess. No one had any idea what was going on. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't think some of you knew what was going on either. We were not given the common courtesy of a heads-up or an explanation. I can't imagine anyone not being upset or concerned if that occurred near where they lived. City representatives did come out to Edgewater on four separate occasions to explain what was happening and provide a timeline. I don't need to expound on what occurred from there, dashing the timeframes from the promises that were made. We allowed the city access to our property via perimeter drive with the promise that it would be paved and completion of needing access. Not done. We repeatedly told the trees implanted would be removed and restored with mature vegetation. The area in question in front of the Little Red Schoolhouse, which is currently enclosed on two sides with a fence covered in thick black netting. If you are familiar with the area, it is apparent that restoring this area would have no impact on what needs to be done to the adjacent property.
Thank you, ma'am. Albert Bryant, please.
The boat ramp and community center parking lot. Please, just fix it.
Well, that was an interesting presentation, I have to admit. I heard him say that he talked to commissioners, went over to managers' head and talked to commissioners. So basically, he was asking commissioners to interfere with the process. Hmm. That means he felt liable. Now, let's go to here. Cost to date, 04-124. Tetra Tech, $100,000, 102 actually. Tetra Tech, $936,000. Tetra Tech, $141,000. Tetra Tech, $9,000. But this is the one that catches my eye. You know why? Because it says Geo Survey Review. Hmm. You know? I saw a map the other day of all of Florida that shows the piezometric head pressure of all of Florida. And you know, if you look just at Lake Monroe, why was there no piezometric head survey done on this? That would have told you, you were going to hit water. That water was four feet above where you were pushing. Hmm. I didn't see, I didn't hear that mentioned, did I? No, I guess not. So whose fault really is this? The people who reviewed that survey. He can blame it on the contractors at the time, but now, let's think about this. I was here September 19th, the night that Mr. Peters, the last time he talked about it. What did he say? Oh, that's right. He said he would go through the contractors' insurers. Not one single contractor. He plural'd that, contractors. But he did say that Tetra Tech was the head contractor. In my book, it starts there, and everything rolls downhill from there. Now, if he's saying that somebody didn't do something right, as far as his contractors, was he not on-site reviewing everything they did? If I'm in charge of a site as a company, I want to review everything they do before they do it. Measure twice, cut once. Hmm. There's a whole list of money we spent on this project. There's not a penny of it you can bring back because nobody wanted to listen to me. When she was made manager, she didn't want to listen to me. When Chisholm was made manager, he didn't want to listen to me. I've got over three hours of video of that place. I've stood at this podium seven different times, asking for help. Felt on deaf ears, didn't it? All of you are to blame for this. Not just him, not just Tetra Tech, not just the contractor who didn't do this or didn't do that. This whole commission is to blame for this. Because you didn't want to listen at all, ever. Throughout this whole process, you didn't listen to Mr. Peters when he was here. You didn't listen after that either. Did you? At all. It's a rhyme that y'all just completely have. I don't blame staff. I blame you.
Courtney Burgus, please.
I am going to echo some of what Albert said. I found it funny that the gentleman from Tetra Tech said he tried to reach you guys and go over Mr. Peters' head to get to you guys. Isn't that backwards? And why do people think that the commission is over the city manager? And I agree with Jody Lee, again. Miracles never cease. We can't just not hold them accountable because you're afraid that there's a witch hunt and nobody will want to do business with us. My husband does very similar work to this. And he works for a big company out in California. His company works for a big company, and they do a lot of work for Amazon. And they're usually the GC, the general contractors, on these jobs. And every single job, they have to have somebody there watching over the subcontractors. Every one, without fail. Anything that happens on any of the jobs, they all come to his company. And then if it's one of the subcontractor's faults, they deal with the subcontractors. Every one of these companies has insurance or should have insurance to cover things like this. But you guys really shouldn't, I mean, I think you should investigate so it doesn't happen again. But you guys shouldn't have to track down where the money's coming from. You guys should be going to the general contractor and let them go through whoever else's insurance companies it must go through. You guys shouldn't have to chase the money, our money, your money, the money for the project. You shouldn't have to chase it. We made the deal with the general contractor, they're supposed to be overseeing all the other contractors and the work. And like quite a few of you have said, you know, why wasn't it anybody, why didn't anybody find out that this wasn't done before the work started? Whatever, not the permit, but whatever, I can't think of the name of it right now. But anyway, I mean, that is whoever was running this project's responsibility to make sure everything that was supposed to be done got done. And if it wasn't, that's who you should be seeing. Thank you.
Rachel Amoroso.
I want to say, like they say on radio, long-term listener, first-time caller, because I don't want to be up here. But my name is Rachel Amoroso, 100 Sweet Gum Woods Court. I've been a Deltona taxpayer for 19 years, a Deltona resident since 1993. When they started bulldozing the land next to us, I am the manager of Edgewater Condominiums, I immediately reached out to the commission, and they were very helpful and very shocked at what was going on. I think that this information should have been given ages ago. It's a shame that this was completely done in vain, and you ruined, not you per se, whoever, ruined one of the most beautiful areas in Deltona. The thing is, is now, yes, if the statute of limitations is there, and we can get some money back, or we can sue someone, or we could do something, okay, do what you need to do. But this needs to move forward. The proposal at the last meeting for the hundred-and-something thousand dollars that everybody wanted to save a little bit of money, and it was mentioned that nobody cares if it's pretty, they want the boat ramp back? Yes, we want everything back. But the residents of Edgewater, and I believe Lakeside, I can't speak for them, want it to be pretty again. We want those trees in, we want that vegetation back, we want that fence out so it can start growing and be like it was. I have a picture here of what it looked like before and what it looks like now. And it is really a huge, huge disgrace at what happened over there. One other thing that I want to mention, that when they did hit the boil, we allowed them to use our road to pump water across underneath and through our stormwater system. Now, our stormwater system is all self-maintained by Edgewater Condominiums. I hear stuff, other places, other homeowners associations that are getting stuff paid for, we didn't ask for anything, but we allowed you to use our main stormwater. We are at the bottom of Deltona. If you think no other stormwater comes that way, you're kind of crazy. But this is just another factor or whatever. But I do want to thank everyone who came out to help us. Phyllis and Glenn have always been very attentive and listened to us. But the goal is right now, let's not, let's not slow down. Let's go fix the vegetation, the ramp when it's time, but we need trees planted there so it gets back to the way it used to look. Thank you.
Tara DiErcio.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Tara DiErcio, District 3. So I just, I'm sure you all know this, but I feel it needs to be said, the two are not mutually exclusive of each other. It's not, we move forward with correcting the issue and restoring the property to what it was before, or we try to hold someone accountable. We can begin to move forward with restoring the property while we're looking for ways to hold others accountable. I mean, the residents that have lived there, that have a direct view, who have dealt with it long enough. I also live in that district, although I don't have a direct view of it every morning. I do miss it. I used to go walking down there, riding my bike. It was a lovely area. That's no longer. I do appreciate wanting to hold parties accountable. And Marcia, I was glad to hear you bring up the statute of limitations because that's got to be the first step, see what the statute of limitations is. Unfortunately, if it has expired, that ship has sailed. There's no point in belaboring the issue, having continued conversations, doing additional work on it. Frankly, there's no point in going through the thousands of sheets of paper that Phyllis was trying to frantically photocopy. I also think, though, if the statute of limitations has not expired, that given the depth of paperwork with the span of years, if the city does want to move forward with pursuing a lawsuit, I would suggest hiring an unbiased, third-party independent engineer. Let them do the investigation. So it's not biased by anyone, by any of the existing contractors, the city. It's a completely unbiased investigation. Once they report their findings, you will then know the party or parties, because there could be more than one, that should be held responsible and accountable. That's when you actually add on the cost of restoring the property, the cost of what it's also going to cost you to hire that independent engineer. File that all in your lawsuit. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Joseph Emmler.
I've heard all of, all of this, sounds like there's issues within the Daytona process that maybe were not followed. Issues with the contractors. Interesting, being an engineer myself, I'd be concerned. But the bottom line is, we want it fixed. And what I've heard here today is nothing but kicking the football forward. What do you have to do with lawsuits, responsibility? I don't care. I think you should get someone to put together a scope of what needs to be done to restore it. Planting trees, bushes. Planting trees, bushes, removing the metal, excuse me, the metal for the Coffe Dam, dredging. Put the specs together, get the quotes, get it done. Let the other process, you have two things going on here, or we'll never get it done. I just ask you to put a scope together, get some quotes, release a contract, and let's get it done. Restore that boat dock. Thank you.
Matt Shaw, please.
Commissioners, how you doing? City manager, Matthew Shaw. So I think there's some good points that have been made. I won't be long and belabor the point. But I fully agree that we should, you know, hold somebody accountable. Jody Lee, I think you're on the right track. No offense, but Tetra Tech, of course, they're going to come in here and say it's not their fault. That's, that's what happened. So I'm not an engineer myself, that's not my background. But I do have several friends that are, they do engineering, so I kind of hit them up as we're in the meeting, right? So obviously, you know, this is not gospel, but they're saying the CDI is supposed to confirm that the project was constructed according to the design and meets the codes and state building requirements. The design has to be sealed by a Florida-registered professional engineer before anyone breaks ground, right? So an engineering firm has to prove that there were no design flaws before it went to construction. Otherwise, the PE, which is the professional engineer who signed off on the final design, could be blamed alongside with the company, right? So that's from an expert, just so you know. So anyway, so I feel like it sounds like there's maybe some process issues that are happening. And it's not here to point fingers, but I think every process can get better. But there seems like, you know, moving forward, obviously, if the statute of limitations is passed, what I think we should do, we should still find out what happened. Because people need to start taking Deltona seriously. I think that's probably an issue. Because if we just keep on letting things go, they won't take us seriously, and then the same things are going to happen over and over. So they need to know that when they come here, we mean business and we're going to handle it, period. And I think that's important as well, too. So with that, appreciate what you guys do. I know it's not easy. I know a lot of people are saying things, but I just think these are things that we should look into more, all right? Thank you for your time.
May that conclude public comments.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee, then Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Harriet.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, and you know, my comments about holding someone responsible, in no way, shape, or form was I talking about delaying the project. That project's been sitting there long enough as an eyesore, as a black eye on our city. It needs to be done. The boat ramp needs to be done, the metal pilings need to come out, it needs to be dredged, all the rest of it. It does. I don't, I don't, I don't really understand why it's been taking so long. Because every person up here has brought this up. Well, not everyone. There's a couple of people that weren't here, sorry, guys. But everybody else that's up here, I know the mayor has brought it up since he's been in office, I've brought it up since he's been in office, Ms. Baritz has brought it up, Dana McCool's been brought up, Steve's been brought up. I don't know why it's not getting done. But this is a project and a spot in our city that needs to be taken care of sooner than later. So I totally agree. If we can hold somebody responsible, you're absolutely right, sir. It's different than what I'm saying about getting it done. It needs to get done. And if we can hold someone responsible, either way, whether we can hold them responsible or find out why it happened, so it doesn't happen again. But if it, statute of limitations doesn't run out, we need to hold someone responsible. Because if not, it's going to still cost a whole bunch of money, and then they're going to come back and ask us for more money to fix it. That's what's going to happen. We need to get it done. We need to get it done sooner than later. This project's been going on way too long, and it's, this project's had three city managers on it. And sorry to say it, but we get blamed for it. When all this project got started and stopped, there's a bunch of us that weren't up here. Because I would have been squawking about it a long time ago. But it, what's that? No. Right. But Mr. Glenn Whitcomb's here, Chisholm's here, Chisholm was here, and John Peters was here, and Marcia was there. So now we're talking about four. So we've had four city managers, and nothing's been done. Just saying. Just point out the obvious. But this needs to be taken care of, and I'd like to see it get done. Thank you.
Commissioner McCool, then Commissioner Harriet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you again for the presentation. I agree that we need to assign responsibility. I like using that term, "assign responsibility" instead of blame here, because there is enough responsibility to go around. So if we concentrate on finding the responsibility, we then can detail how for it not to happen again. And I'm concerned with, we've gone over how it was, we've gone over what happened, and I would now like to go over in the future with a time certain, just let us know what it is like now and what the plans are. And if we could please include the immediate, I understand that every resident needs to understand and follow along with what's being done, what restoration is. But I'm asking that we keep them apprised as we go along, the immediate neighbors, as far as restoration and what our next steps are. Because here we are, we've taken this apart tonight, we've assigned the city manager or staff the responsibility of finding out what happened. So if we can do that with a time certain date that is agreeable, to come back with that information, what we're doing right for restoration. Everybody sees what's going on right now, but I think that kind of knowledge is power. If we can keep the residents informed regarding what next steps are, I think that that would be good, you know what I mean, for, to move this project along. It will create the expectation with the residents that we are doing something and moving along. And then it will give, it will set an expectation for us to follow through. So even if only information is exchanged so that residents know, I would request that that happen as we move along. To figure this out is going to take, you know, the wisdom of Solomon to do this. So that's where I would like for us to go with this. It's just time for us to move forward. We're trying to move forward. So if we can, just make sure, assurances that we are finding out what happened to avoid it, and then letting us know what next steps are, and the residents can know that. Because I think that that, I think that they're exhausted also from dwelling on what happened. And I think that they would like to know what's going to happen now and how it's going to be paid for second. So if we can keep cognizant of that, that would be appreciated. I know you guys are exhausted. You know what I mean? Like, this is going to be a tedious process. I respect Tetra Tech, thank you for coming out and setting the record straight. But if there is someone that needs to, we need to understand where the responsibility lies. Because if we can recover that money like everyone else has said, we need to do that without bastardizing anybody, you know, in the process. Because there, from what I'm seeing, were, were some missteps, you know, and there's enough blame game to go along. But ultimately, the residents are paying for it, and I would like for them to, us, me, I'm a resident, pay for as little as possible. So thank you guys very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Harriet, and then Commissioner Vila Vasquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Would also like to see some sort of report that assigned responsibility to the different parties. I don't know that we need to spend money on legal fees and all that kind of stuff because the slim pickings of getting anything back just sounds like another black hole. That being said, Ms. Phyllis, on the March 25th agenda item, or maybe Mr. Whitcomb, was that landscaping agenda item not the first step to get this site restored?
Yes, sir, it was.
I'd like to take credit for voting against doing that item. I think that's the first step, is that we take credit for us delaying the restoration. They brought a plan to us.
There was no plan.
Well, that was the first step.
Mike Soft.
That was the first step.
But to give out just $144,000 with no plan, no idea, no nothing, that was crazy. What's that?
Just, just for clarification, was there a plan, Ms. Wallace?
Yes, sir, there was. I failed to put it in the package based on prior direction from the commission that they didn't want to see landscaping plans. My failure. I will bring it back with that plan and the contract.
Thank you. Could we, can we make sure it's on the next commissioner meeting, please?
Sorry, Ms. Phyllis, I apologize. If it came that, the commission came with no plan, I'm sorry, I wanted to see a plan. So I apologize. It's not your--
We can do that, not a problem.
Right. Commissioner, I'm sorry, are you done, Commissioner Harriet? Commissioner Vila Vasquez, and then we'll move to the next.
Thank you, Mayor. And Commissioner Davidson, that is exactly what I was going to be bringing up, that the first step was brought up to the commission, and you all voted against it. And so, again, if there would have been a plan, I'm sure that it would have been a little bit more easier to understand because that, what Ms. Wallace brought up was not just for greenery. It was, and Ms. Wallace, maybe you want to explain a little bit more of what it, you know, entail. I believe it was parking and--
Was a parking restoration for the, what would eventually be for the boat ramp, the Shell parking lot. Landscaping, bringing it back to as much of a natural state that we could prior to construction activities, understanding we can't bring back, you know, an 18-inch diameter tree. We were putting in the same type of landscaping that was there that was taken out in basically the same location. Little bit more cleanup of the site, take the fence down that we put up, the temporary construction fence, and just basically clean up that whole upland side, and then be able to move towards the shoreline for the boat restoration, the ramp restoration, excuse me. And we're getting closer to having that project task authorization presented as well. So it may be something that we can align a little bit more closely so that we don't put landscaping in and it falls into conflict with any other work efforts that are there. I did not know at the time that one of the buildings there was being considered for demolition. I didn't know that until the night I presented this item.
But does that stop the project? Will that stop the project?
It doesn't have to stop the project, but we might have to adjust how we work.
Right. Because what you, what you will be working on is on the other side of the little red schoolhouse. And the building that we're talking about is the one in the middle.
Yes, ma'am. I just want to make sure that, and that we don't put something there that will be in conflict for when or if that building were to ever need to be demoed.
Understand. Thank you.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move forward to new business, Section A, update and review of private pre-application and public development projects.
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works. You have in your package a document that you've seen in the past. And what I was trying to do is to keep the commission and the residents abreast of public projects, private projects, and a lot of our pre-application projects that come to DRC because there's a lot of messages that get out there on Facebook or different social media platforms. So this will be presented to you every quarter. And it has at the beginning, the private developments, and I've tried to bring them as up-to-date as they are currently. I will bring your attention to another eyesore of Deltona, Enrico Ridge. Fines are being assessed as of late last week. $850 per day, I believe, is the total amount. I have not heard from the builder, the builder's rep, the owner's rep, or anybody regarding that. Since that's happened, we're trying to monitor what's going on out there. We have seen some activity, but I think they were doing an inventory of what materials they actually have combined within the site. So I didn't have that updated because I'd already done the presentation. Really want to bring your attention mostly to the pre-application things. As I said, we get a lot of projects in that we see at DRC. I have always what I call the hurry-up-and-wait game. Somebody will come in and say they want to do something, it'll get out on social media, and nothing ever happens. So I didn't know if anybody's had a chance to look this over, if there's any questions that I can answer regarding anything.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm trying to go back here. Phyllis, if you can go back over to Island Walk South.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to be sure, and refresh me, because I've seen a lot of developments come through in my time here. So I want to ask you about Island Walk. What did we, when they were building it out, how was this presented to us, as single-family residential units, right?
Yes, ma'am.
People were going to buy the properties, right? There were going to be ownership, yes?
That was certainly the presentation, yes, ma'am.
The ownership.
Yes.
So listen to this, and I want us to take this in our deepest of hearts here. Does anyone but me are looking at this and have, and highlighted in yellow, the property appears to have been converted to solely rental lease through the management company. Units are advertised as ranging in rentals of $2,135 to $2,565 as a rental. When they, just if you can refresh me, when they brought this to us, it was my understanding that these were going to be ownership. Is that--
I can tell you that the underlying developer has never done in Deltona--
Point of clarification, we're on page 11 of what--
Yeah, I apologize. Yeah, 11 of 24. Yeah.
And I'll start putting page numbers on them in the future.
You can see it, it's on here. 11 of 20, look, it's in the little gray box. Can you not see it? It's in the little--
No, I don't see any numbers.
Touch your thing and then--
Just saying, the presentation is on here, for God's sake. And since this report was put out, they are, I think, 100% built out. I drove through there the other day with the city manager, and I don't think there was a vacant lot. All the homes have gone vertical, so. And it was presented from the developer that has done other developments. There was nothing that led us to believe a staff or the commission that it would be anything other than owner occupied.
See, I'm, that's where I'm at here. That's, this is where I'm at here with this, is that there are no caveats, I don't think, in our land code that says you must come back if you have changed your mind, because we give you a piece of the pie. We make our developments based on what is brought to us as the gospel. We just had this happen. We had a development come through that had been pushed through since 2012 as a 414-unit building. We changed the zoning based on that, we changed the premise based on that, or everything was modeled and okayed at 414, and we built around that. And then what happens? They came back for 300 more. So they play this developer game, this is what we're telling you, we're going to give you, we're going to get you to put out, you know? This is what we're telling you. And then this is what happens, without so much as commissioner comment. You know, we are telling our residents that we are building for home ownership, and we're not. And I think that it's deceptive, and I don't know, do we have a right to understand what is going on? We get yelled at about lack of strategic planning, and we set forth these parameters, and then this happens right here. And I'm needing to understand by which mechanism this is allowed to happen. That we're told that we're building one way, and it comes back as this. This isn't ownership, this is an investment here. I'm looking at all the units here, and you know, we, our infrastructure, our infrastructure is not set up for what we're doling out to it at this juncture. So can somebody provide me with a mechanism, a legal mechanism, or a procedural mechanism that if they tell us one thing, and then we get this, that we have recourse here? Who's in charge here of how we develop? Are we in charge of this, or is the developer in charge of this? Because this looks like the developer's in charge of it. So I need to understand what the hockey sticks is going on here. Somebody set me straight. I just feel really passionate about this, that I feel like we have been duped here. When in the process did they do this? Do they have to report what to us? What happens here that we say okay to one thing and this happens? Please, somebody tell me. Mr. Mayor, I'm good, but I just really want to know.
Well, before I go to any other commissioner, I would like clarification on that. Look, I have no issue with rentals, right? Because obviously, rent. But I have an issue that they come to this dais and they tell us they're going to build something. And I get they have rights, but not under deception. I'm sorry. And I get they have rights, but not under deception, I'm sorry. So I'd like to know specifically who this developer is and what recourse do we have, Madam Attorney?
This is, I'm sorry, this is acting in bad faith to me, I'm sorry.
That's why I'm trying to find out what-
The developer is Ashton Woods.
Is there any legal recourse, Madam Attorney? Sorry, I know you're trying to look through something.
Mr. Mayor, I will tell you that, you know, part of what you're all gonna be dealing with is redoing the comp plan, and of course, the land development code has to fit in that process of doing the comp plan.
I get that, and I don't mean to interrupt you, here's the issue I have.
Okay.
Catalina Point, I know for a fact is about to come back to the city because they want to actually make a couple of the rentals into purchasable housing, okay?
That's good.
They're coming back to us because they sold it to us in a different light, and actually appreciate that honesty. This right here is completely dishonest. I'm sorry, and I hope they're listening because this is unacceptable. And if it means that we have other lands that is available, then this is where we start holding them accountable. But how is it that one developer's being told that if they make any changes, they have to come back, yet this developer just walks all over us and they do whatever they want, and they don't have to come back, and they're already advertising what they're renting? That's what I'm not understanding, I mean, did we put two different things in place?
I mean, I don't know, no one has discussed this with me, I mean, I don't know the specifics of what's going on here. And why I brought up what I did was because these are the kinds of examples that need to be documented, so as we redo the LDC, we stop it. I mean, it's just like what's going on in the DRC, and I think that you're getting really good comments from residents. Phyllis runs a really wonderful DRC, and what's happening there is the residents are seeing the attempt of the DRC to try and put the brakes on, trying to understand, trying to explaining to the people that come to the DRC that she's gonna tell them that the different disciplines that are sitting at that table are gonna tell them, "We got a problem with this, and we got a problem with that." What we don't have enough of, in my opinion, is there needs to be more than in the LDC, the conversation of bringing it back to the commission, or in our case, going back to the P and Z, in some cases, going to the commission. These are examples that will have to be built into that process. It hasn't been done in years, so of course, we've got holes all over the place.
Madam Attorney, can I ask you, and I know this is not your fault, Phyllis, please, I really do hold staff in very high regard. Can you, can you at some, I'd say within the next seven business days if possible, can you let this whole commission know when is the next possible, when is the next possibility that we can push for a housing moratorium in the city?
I'm working on it right now, yes sir.
Okay, please, within seven days.
Yes, I can, yes.
We need to know.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Coewell, and then Vice Mayor Jody Lee. Okay, Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Well, thank you Mayor, my issue is on the same thing, and I'm not gonna attack, Ms. Phyllis is definitely not attacking you, and I agree with Commissioner McCool, we've talked about this, it gets sold to us as ownership and then it's rentals, and we say we have to get with the future land use codes, the comp plans, all of them. This is what we've been asking for since the last election. We've all been, well, I'll look this way. Nobody over there's been here since last time, so. Okay, we're asking for it now, but last election, we've all been asking for this. And when can we get this done? We want it done also, like, when they get it, Commissioner McCool, I know Commissioner McCool, she's honest, we also need to get that thing. If you get an approval, if you don't break ground so long, you have to carve back and start over. Because that would have killed that whole mess that we had with the other project. We keep trying to do this, but we're asking for it, and it's not going forward. Commissioner Coewell's asked for it, McCool's asked for it, Mertz's asked for it, the mayor's asked for it, we've, I've asked for it. I know I don't say it as elegant, as pretty as everybody else. Just saying, no, I'm pretty, yeah. But we've all been asking for it, and we're not getting it. What, why is it not coming to us? Can we get a straight answer why it's not coming to us? Anybody? It doesn't take two years. I just want a straight answer why we've all asked for it and we're not getting it. Not a big blow up, because we're busy, can't do it right now. That wouldn't even work, it would at least be an answer.
What I would, what I would say, Vice Mayor, is, and Commissioner Mayor, sorry I didn't go- You know, they're working on the, we have our consultant working, and they came last week for a workshop, discussed the process with you all. As far as a moratorium goes, I would need to work with our legal department as far, and she's already working on it now, but I mean, just to try to get an update. What I will, what I would like to suggest on the Island Walk South project is that we, you allow staff time to go back and look at that because we weren't in these positions at that time when that project was being brought forward and, you know, it was being built. Because I don't believe there was anything in there about rental, rental properties. I think it was single-family homes, if I remember correctly, because I sat across the room over there. Wasn't involved in the project necessarily, but would you allow us a little time to go back and look and see if that was mentioned in there anywhere in any of the documents? I don't think it was, but I would rather go back and look and make sure. And what we can do about it at this point, I don't know that there is anything we can do because they have purchased the property, they have built the houses, they're done, they're moving people in. I don't think all of them have residents in them yet, but it's pretty much a full buildout. As Ms. Wallace mentioned, we did ride through there a few days ago, and that's what we saw.
I'm sorry, Mr. Wickham-
And I would like to help if I could.
I'm not trying to, I know it comes across that I'm attacking y'all, I'm not. I know, I understand y'all weren't in a place when this is going, but this is stuff we've been asking for, and the mayor is absolutely right, that Catalina Point has been changing. I know they came to us and said rentals, and they're gonna put a restaurant in there. And so far, I heard that's changing too. That's not what we agreed to, there has to be something in there sometime soon. We have more developments coming up, and things are going there for application. We need to hold some of these people responsible, because these developers, we have limited land left, and they are gonna take advantage quicker than, I won't even use the expression, they are gonna get over as fast as they can before we change anything. I see it coming already. If we're gonna change stuff or block stuff, they're gonna push things through as fast as they can right now. That's why there's a gentleman here, that's why he comes to every single meeting, because he's waiting for them to start trying to jam something through. And we need to take care of this sooner than later.
Do we have, I see the two commissioners are up on here again. Do we have the ability for, at least until we get an answer on this moratorium thing, and even with commercial, that in these contracts that we're doing with them, that if there's any changes that are made to their plans, that they have to come back to the dais to get approval for the changes?
I was gonna suggest that I could get with legal and look at our development order that is a standard template, we do change it for certain developments, and see if we can add some conditions in there such as, you presented it as a single-family owner occupied, and we've now found out this. Maybe, you know, put some new language in there based on some of the issues that we've had. I don't know that we can, but I would rely on our legal department to advise us accordingly.
Because I think we're all up here, we're very logical, if, I mean, Catalina's, I keep using that one because it's a good, it's a good example. They told us there were gonna be rentals, we didn't vote no, right? But, you know, they're making a change, they're coming to us again for us to approve it. These people told us it was gonna be houses for sale, and they could have just been honest with us from the beginning. Maybe, maybe the commission then or now would have voted for it. But why be deceitful about it, you know what I mean? So if we can put some, some type of protections in place that, hey, we're gonna change the land use codes, or the, what do you call this? Goodness gracious, a long night. The code for it to be changed, the zoning, so there you go. That we're gonna change the zoning on something, it needs to be for what they are proposing. If there's a change to their proposal that they're presenting to us, then they, they need to come back to the dais.
If I could speak regarding Island Walk South, it was several months ago, somebody mentioned it to me, I reached out to the developer, and I point-blank asked them, and they didn't answer, yes or no. So I just Googled, and that's where I got this information from. I just Googled, and it ran me to this website for this leasing company, and that's where this all came from, it's not like I just, you know, you know.
Thank you. Commissioner McCool? Commissioner McCool, will you go on us?
She just answered the question I was gonna ask.
Thank you. Commissioner McCool?
I'm gonna lose my religion over this, honest to God, because here's the thing. We have so much, only so little recourse that we can do. We get slayed over our, our visioning, over our strategic planning, and we plan in a certain way, and some of the answers that we get sometime, I don't know what they're gonna put on the property. Or do we know the difference between, do we, in order to make good decisions, know the difference between a major and a minor amendment? Because I've seen that too, trying to shove things through as a minor amendment on something, naughty developers, and it come through, it's a major amendment. I've seen a major amendment tried to get slid through, passed the commission. I've seen all that in my time on the dais. And I want to make sure that you guys, Ms. Phyllis, are armed with the ability to say, no, this is our code, you can't. This right here, this particular one, I want whatever crook or cranny we have to do to have it stopped until this is clarified, I would think that we're well within our rights to do that as it was presented. If you go back and it was presented as one, and it was changed as another, and it wasn't sent through this commission or through you for a major amendment, I would think that that's a major amendment, the use of, other than what was sold to us, to stop it. Because this is baloney. They cannot just make these unilateral decisions in our town without coming through here because we have to report back here, and it's really uncomfortable when that's happening. So, I would like to see immediately, however y'all need to, this stopped until we get the answers that we deserve. The legal answer that we deserve, the answer that you deserve, the technical answers. Where was the request for an amendment on the use here? So, and I would like the legal opinion on, I need to understand legally what they have done here also. Acting in bad faith, specifically, I'm asking that, acting in bad faith, and I would like that looked into, because this is stopping with this commission right here, it's baloney.
Is there any public comment?
No, Mayor.
Okay. So we're gonna, thank you Phyllis, we're gonna move to Section B, which is request consideration and approval for the bid received from a Classic Touch Painting DBA Epoxy Daytona of Port Orange, I almost said something completely different, for the preparation and resurfacing of all floors at Public Works Fleet Maintenance Shop in an amount not to exceed $39,900. Ms. Wallace?
Phyllis Wallace, Public Works, I want to lead off with, this was a budgeted item. It came in below budget, I'm not doing a budget transfer, I'm not asking to move money from one place or another. We originally bid it out, and your team at the depot was a little concerned with the bids, so we rebid it, and we got the bids that we thought were more in line with what they would like to have out there. And for those that have not been to the depot, we have a fleet. Commissioner Simkus came for a walkthrough, so he knows it's a well-taken-care facility. Your staff is very prideful in maintaining everything that they have out there, and this is just another way to maintain the floors so that we have longevity with that facility out there. That maintains every piece of vehicle we have in the city of Deltona, including fire apparatus, as well as all of your other small materials. Any questions?
You know there is. We'll start with Commissioner McCool, and then we'll go to Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Commission, thank you so, thank you so much. Ms. Wallace, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move to approve.
Well, I didn't even hear a motion, we have a second already, so.
Thank you very much, I'd like to make the motion to approve the bid received from A-Class Touch Painting DBA Epoxy Daytona of Port Orange, Florida, for the preparation and resurfacing of all floors at the Public Works Number One Fleet Maintenance Shop in an amount not to exceed $39,900, as it was already in the budget. The city manager has the authority to make corrections of scrivners, errors, and the like.
Second.
There's a motion by Commissioner McCool, and a second by Commissioner Harriet. We have two folks on the board meanwhile, is there any public comment?
Yeah, you knew that was coming.
Vice Mayor Jody Lee, thank you, Liz. Vice Mayor Jody Lee.
Hi, Ms. Phyllis.
Yes, sir.
I was gonna say, thank you for having it in the budget. Thanks for not coming for a budget amendment, and thanks for having it all done. And I hope the floor is good, and let us know when it's done so we can come see it, that's all.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
Thank you, I just wanted to bring up to Ms. Phyllis that she forgot to mention that that's also where we keep our animals when animal control goes around. On the other side.
They're in close proximity, yes, they're in close proximity.
Seeing that there's no public comment, there you go, thank you Joyce. Think somebody wants to go home. The motion passes 7 to 0. Alright, now we go to the fun stuff, hopefully some of us keep it short. We'll look this way this time. We're gonna start with city commission special reports and requests. Commissioner Harriet?
I don't have anything for tonight, let's go home.
Commissioner Simkus?
None, thank you.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez?
I just have one, which came through some of my residents, and this is, I spoke to our interim city manager, and it's about Duke Energy. And I've gotten complaints about how they just go in the back of the easement and just tear down their, their trees and have no consideration on what, on how they do it, and they just would like Duke to have a little bit more consideration and be a little bit more careful when they're taking the trees down or cutting them down. And they understand that it's because of safety reasons, the trees might be hanging on the electric line, but I do have gone to some houses, and I have seen how they have literally destroyed people's backyards and their trees and stuff like that. So just, just wanna bring that up.
Commissioner McCool?
I only have one thing, okay, so breathe. Regarding, there was a shooting, another shooting last night at one of our parks. It was not inside the park, it was right outside the park, but we had homeowners, a homeowner who's homeless hit three times by bullets from that fight. This was on my street, and, listen, I take all shootings seriously. These were young males involved, and it was a juvenile reason that they, that this occurred. I will let the sheriff's department announce all of that. But with that being said, I am asking, as a special request, is that we revisit ASAP, first of all, bandwidth for our parks, to make sure that we can put these cameras in that we talked about. I understand that we have talked about budgeting the better cameras that the sheriff can access here. But with three shootings in two of our parks in four weeks, I would really like for us to fast-track that or move that forward, bringing back information to the commission on what that looks like. Public safety, I think, is our number-one mission here, right, in serving our constituency. And also, like, for you, I believe, are having conversations with the sheriff right now regarding extra deputies and patrols, I don't know, I'm going to say that it might be forthcoming based on conversations, and I don't want to speak for you, Mr. Lord Wickham, but that is, that is pressing, and I would like to see, report back on that by our next commission meeting, right, so that the general public knows, because I have been asked today about that, so that's all I have, but it is a serious matter in our city.
So, let's do an actual consensus, because in the last comstat meeting that Commissioner Avila and I were in, they did request, they don't have access to certain cameras.
Mayor, if I may, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, yes, I have been talking to the sheriff's department today, actually. Captain Powers and I had a conversation, our attorney, Ms. Marcia- Our attorney, Ms. Marcia.
Ms. Marcia, tomorrow I'm talking to.
Yes, no, that's what I was going to say. So Ms. Marcia Segal George.
Marcia's fine.
Okay. She's going to be contacting the sheriff's department tomorrow, and in particular Captain Powers. We are going to have another conversation with him tomorrow. He has some good ideas on some things that can be done, we just have to run it through our legal and their legal, and once we get that done, we're going to have some other things in place. Also met today with our parks director, Mr. Manning, Prince of Players, I'm sorry. And I met with Robert Cordero, our IT director, today, and we have a solution for the one park that you're concerned with right away, and we are, the other stuff is being put in the budget for next year, but we may be able to do some of that stuff this year. We're looking at the funds to see what we can do. So just to let you know, we are on it. I don't really want to divulge what I talked about with the sheriff's department today. I don't think it'd be prudent for me to do so, but that's where we are right now.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor, I apologize, but on bandwidth, if we can, you know what I mean, in here, because we keep getting, our residents get interrupted with watching the meeting, it came up again tonight, and it's like, I don't know, the fourth time in as many meetings that we've had, that we're having a continued issue, so.
So after you have your conversation, if you can please make sure that's on the next agenda item, so we can.
Yes, yes, and the issues going on here at City Hall, I've also discussed with our IT director and our PIO staff. We are working on a solution with Spectrum as far as some of these things go. They have been issued a work order to do some things, and as soon as I get some more specifics with that, we'll bring that back to you at the next meeting and discuss it with you.
Okay. Commissioner Kowal?
My comments are going to be along the same lines as the cameras. This seems to be a growing issue in the city, and I think the need to move on it quickly is necessary at this moment.
Thank you, Commissioner Kowal. Vice Mayor Jody Lee?
I've got nothing.
I do have to read a statement to get a vote, actually, from here. I got you.
You didn't call me.
I did call you.
No, you didn't. You did not call me.
Okay. Commissioner Avila, yeah.
I was supposed to press your reports.
No, that's where we're on. We're still on, no, it's getting late. So on October 17, 2016, Mayor John Mazarsik received approval from the commission to support efforts to obtain a tank at no cost to the city other than transportation. I have since been promoting the efforts to secure the military equipment from the Veterans Memorial Park. The U.S. Army Donations Program Office has requested updated qualification documentation. They have requested that the minutes from October 2016 vote needed to reflect that the city approves the equipment to be displayed on public land and will never be displayed on private property. May I get a vote to approve that if the city receives or requests a tank, that it will be displayed on public land and never displayed on a private property? Can we do a verbal vote, please?
Are we, Tom, has there been previous discussion on this, that I'm just?
Yeah, in 2016.
There's been multiple, and it seems like, do you want to?
The problem is that in order to get the tank, they needed specific things in the motion, which did not take place, which is why we're trying to take care of that now. That's why he had this field. It has everything that they need in it, but you have to actually do a motion and a vote for it. Can't be a consensus, and that's what he's asking for.
Well, point of what are motions at this time of the meeting are not appropriate? I would prefer to see this as an agenda item if we're not on a timeline.
We're going to, unfortunately, I get that, but it's time-sensitive, so I am going to request that we do a vote.
I want to make a motion, we approve it.
Okay. We have a motion by the vice mayor, and who was the second? Commissioner Harriet, thank you. Can we do a vote, please? And I apologize, Commissioner Simkus, because I agree with you, but because of the time sensitivity of it. The motion passes six to one. All right, I have no other special request. Now we get to go to city attorney comments. City manager comments?
Oh, yeah, just a couple real quick, so we can get out of here. All right. Arbor Day, Arbor Day coming up, April the 26, 2024, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., or until supplies last here at Deltona City Hall. April the 27, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00, will be our West Volusia Summit at the center. We have got a few things for topics, we'll be putting out an agenda here in the next day or so and get that moving. And pretty much that's it, that I have everything else on these flyers or in the city manager's report, if you'd like to see. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to the city commission comments, where I promised not to skip Commissioner Avila Vasquez. We'll start with Commissioner Harriet.
It's been a fun evening, let's go home.
Okay. Commissioner Simkus?
Just a quick thank you to everyone who participated in the city manager search. I think the committee that we chose did a great job, and I appreciate everyone's input. I did talk to a lot of residents about this, and took a lot of input, and did take a long time to consider all the different points of view, so thank you all for what you have said and how you have participated. I hope we can see more participation on more issues in the future. And then also, just as I've heard many times, you know, oh, we have this thing, we could do this, this other department, we could do this, just a blanket challenge to, I guess, city manager or staff, whoever wants to hear it, as we do prepare for a potential new city manager, if you have ideas for how to improve functions in your department, please be prepared to present those immediately when you have a new city manager. Thank you, good night.
Commissioner Avila Vasquez, you're setting the standard. There you go.
I don't think anybody can speak as fast as you.
Oh my God, I think I just got, thank you very much. I also want to give a great shout-out and thank you to the committee for the search of the new city manager. You guys did an awesome job, and I am so proud that we honored everything that you guys turned into the city, the commissioners. I also want to give a big shout-out to staff for putting out the meet-and-greet, and also the interview day. You also did an awesome job, and thank you for my minions who hung out with me out there on the other side during the meet-and-greet. I mean, I just want to thank everybody for it, and have a good day. Thank you for showing up.
Commissioner McCool?
Yes, thank you very much. I have here a flyer for Volusia County Schools. There's a job fair for teens tomorrow being held at University High School from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. You can go online and find it, okay, you can go online and find it, and then also, as your local park avenger, I would like to bring out Parks and Recs 2024 Kids Summer Camp, open to ages 6 to 12, $100 per week, and camp hours are 7:30 a.m. to 5:30 p.m. It is at West Cryle Park, June 10 through August 2. It's for eight weeks. There's a one-time registration fee, but there are three field trips a week, water days, movies, sports, games, and more. Please call for more information here and the rest of the good stuff in the city manager's report. Also, I would like to thank our city manager, Citizens Selection Committee, thank you for your hard work and your dedication. The process was important. Thank you guys for hanging in there, thank staff for hanging in here. And as we move through this process, Mr. Wickham, I want to tell you that I know that it's been exhausting for you to do this job. I know that it's not your first love, but you stepped up to the plate to take care of your city. I know that you have a long-term commitment to this city, sir. Your pragmatism, your patience, and your care for the residents, staff, and commission equally are to be commended, sir, because that's a hard task. You have gone about the way of being an independent thinker while being collaborative, and your patience, sir, and your dedication to the city is really, really appreciated, and I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart for helping guide us through this process as well. So thank you, sir.
Commissioner Kowal, you're good. Vice Mayor Jody Lee?
Just want to thank everybody for working together on the city manager thing. That's all I want to do. Have a good night.
I'll be brief. I want to thank everyone, the city, I guess we all want to thank everyone for the city manager selection committee. I just want to say, this past Sunday, we had the mayor's finish challenge Warrior Day. We had so many residents come out to enjoy this event. This is the second year we're doing it. We keep getting more and more sponsors. Abin Health was the primary sponsor for this event. Thank you to all the staff, everyone that took part of it. It was so much fun. I will call Sheriff Chitwood out, because he kind of challenged everyone that if they caught me falling and they took a picture, he would donate $500. I don't know how it happened, but I went to go tie my shoe after I got off of a wall, and somehow I fell, and our very own Ruben was there filming me, and he actually got a picture of me falling. So if we can get Sheriff Chitwood to make that donation to the firefighter foundation, because they also donated and they helped, so it can go back into the city, I would greatly appreciate that. Other than that, stay tuned for some more events that we're having, and for next year, this meeting is adjourned. Have a good night.